Good afternoon and welcome to the May regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure that your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am Chair of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiki, Susan Mallon, Heather Campbell, Sheree Neisen-Jordan, T.J. Tsang, Kelly Ogle, Sam Hope, Robert Tangay, Ayoi Dirdran, and Councillors Jennifer Wynas and Terry Wong. Online, we have two of our Commissioners. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfelt. Chief Newfelt or External Officer Smart, could you please introduce who's going to be here today?
Thank you Chair. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to first say happy 90th anniversary. And I would like to say that my name is Superintendent Claire Smart. I'm the Executive Officer for Chief Newfelt. I have the honour of introducing our executive leadership team and I will start off to my far right. So, we have Acting Executive Director Tricia Spadman of the Finance Division, Director Michael Nun of Strategic Communications Section, Executive Director Catherine Murphy of our Legal and Regulatory Services Division, Acting Chief People Officer Tiffany Fastnich of Bureau of People and Organizational Development, Chief Constable Mark Newfelt, Deputy Chief Paul Cook Bureau of Investigative Support, Deputy Chief Chad Toffick Bureau of Organizational Performance, Deputy Chief Katie McClellan Bureau of Service and Community Support, and Acting Deputy Chief Cliff O'Brien of the Bureau of Community Policing. Thank you Chair.
Thank you and thank you, everyone, for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our Commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where Commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our Commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Zigziga, Begani, Omskabe Begani, and Gynae First Nations. It is also home to the Irakha, Nakota, Wiskatabe First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Good Stony First Nations, as well as the Tsutsina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and Métis Nation of Alberta. Our Commission is committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of colour. As we start our meeting, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for those joining us for the first time. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available for those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we've completed the presentations, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media professionals can participate. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing and seeing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any Member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any Member of the Commission wish to request an item from the consent agenda to be brought forward for discussion? Seeing no such requests, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. Today is a special day for our Commission and I would like to start my Chair's Report on a celebratory note. Ninety years ago, Mayor Andrew Davidson, Judge E.P. McNeil, and Magistrate H.G. Scott held the first Calgary Police Commission meeting on May 11, 1934. While other cities in Alberta had formed police commissions before Calgary, all of them had been disbanded soon after their creation. Calgary's Commission likely was able to learn from the experience of other cities, which has helped us become the oldest police commission in the province. Some of the first things the Commission tackled back then are still things we are responsible for today, like police policies and priorities. But they were also focused on some things that would make it smile today, like the need to close several cigar shops and design better stop signs for Calgary's needs. Our Commission has grown and changed over the years and we've had countless Commissioners dedicate their time and talents to ensure that the police are an extension of the community that they serve. Our Commission today would like to thank all of those who have served in this role before us. Calgary has a proud history of civilian oversight of the police and its legacy is one we hope to live up to and build upon in the years to come. To formally mark this incredible milestone, I would like to take a moment to play a quick video produced in partnership with Youth Link to celebrate the 90 years of the Calgary Police Commission. Please go ahead.
When the Calgary Police Service was created in 1885, City Council supervised the police chief and even set the wages of each individual officer.
The results of this system were interesting. A mayor once banned the police from raiding illegal gambling halls after a raid resulted in some high-profile Calgarians being arrested.
Council once even made the chief a constable again so the mayor could issue orders directly to each officer.
It wasn't until 1908 that conversations started around the need for independent police oversight. Calgary opted to have the police answer to senior leaders of the city administration instead of council.
Meanwhile, other municipalities like Leftbridge and Edmonton tried unsuccessfully to establish independent commissions.
Even though all the previous police commissions in Alberta had been disbanded, Council decided in 1933 that it was time to try the model in Calgary.
On May 11, 1934, the mayor, the court's senior judge, and the city's chief magistrate held their first meeting as the newly-formed Calgary Police Commission.
The early commission focused on updating police policies, designing new stop signs, and taking steps to address local crime trends.
The Commission also recognised the importance of public accountability, deciding from the beginning that media should be allowed to attend their meetings.
Calgary's growth and changes to legislation evolved the Commission over the years, until the first Police Act standardised the role and composition of commissions across the province in 1971.
Today's Commission better reflects the city's diversity and shares the responsibility of police oversight with the province, council, and bodies like the Alberta Sirius Incident Response Team.
For 90 years now, the Calgary Police Commission has helped maintain a balance between the police being both free from political interference and accountable to the community by setting police policies and priorities, supervising the police chief, and approving how the police budget is spent. Our Commission is proud to be building on this legacy as we lead the Calgary Police Service into the next 90 years.
All right, thank you. Interesting, so 90 years. For those who are interested, a more detailed history of the Commission can be found on our website and we'll be sharing highlights from the past on our social media over the next couple of weeks to celebrate. And of course, there's lots of more information at Youth Link. Moving on to issues of today, Commissioners were busy these past two months attending a number of events. We were honoured to be invited by members of Calgary's Muslim community to Eid al-Fitr festival and we also participated in the Diversity Fair at CPS headquarters where various cultural and religious groups from across Calgary came to share their traditions with Members of the Service. To build on our knowledge of current police practices, most of our Commission visited the Services Firearms Lab and Chief Profoot Learning Centre at the end of April. The visit provided us with insight into how the service processes firearms used in crimes and how new recruits are trained. Commissioners were also pleased to attend three recognition events: the Regimental Ball, the Beacons of Hope Festival, and the graduation of Class 256. Finally, several of our Commissioners and staff joined our colleagues from across the province at the Alberta Association of Police Governance Conference earlier this month to share knowledge and work together on common issues. And I'll just do a brief aside here. One of the things that Commission members do is they ask to do ride-alongs with officers on a periodic basis and I had the opportunity of doing a ride-along last month. And the degree of expertise and intelligence and professionalism and compassion I saw of all of the officers while I was in the car on the road for 10 hours was remarkable. And finally, I had to ask to see if we were going to stop for something to eat because the person who was taking me around apparently doesn't stop for dinner. But it was an awesome event and we do truly get a chance to go out and see and I think all of our Members have done that at least once or some several times. So, thank you very much for that. As a brief update on the workplace review that was announced at our last meeting, Commission staff have been working on potential processes for selecting and hiring someone to do an independent audit or review. Our Commission will be making some decisions on the selection process during our in-camera meeting tonight and more information will be shared once we've decided on the best way to move forward with this step. As usual, I want to close by touching on just a few of the ways Members of the Calgary Police Service have delivered on the priorities of Calgarians since our last meeting. Investigators laid charges in some significant cases, including the death of two-year-old Olivia Hayden. Investigations into the deaths of children are extremely difficult for investigators and I want to thank the Members of the homicide unit for their work on this case. In two other cases, officers laid over 80 charges related to drug trafficking and firearm possession and removed numerous weapons and drugs from our streets. The Economic Crimes Unit laid charges against a doctor alleged to have sent over $2 million worth of fraudulent bills to the province. And District Two officers laid 90 charges against people alleged to have stolen identification and banking information for the purpose of committing fraud. Significant sex crime investigations were also completed recently, including one that resulted in charges against a former teacher for sexual assault alleged to have occurred 20 years ago. Thank you to all the investigators that worked so hard to bring these cases to a close. I know these highlights are just a small reflection of the work that Members of the Service do every day to address the crime and safety concerns of Calgarians. On behalf of our Commission, thank you for all of your work. With that, I conclude my Chair's Report and will now move on to our presentations from the Calgary Police Service. The first item we'll be discussing today is the response to the protest encampment at the University of Calgary. We received over 1,300 letters on the encampment removal and I want to thank everyone that took the time to share their perspective with us. We know that there are strong views on this issue and I want to acknowledge that those voices have been heard. Our Commission has a policy that requires the service to provide a report to us after major policing events so that our Commission can assess whether the priorities and policies that guided the response are aligned with the community's expectations. Our Commission does not have the authority or the responsibility to determine whether actions taken during a major event were lawful. The province has already directed the Alberta Sirius Incident Response Team to look into the actions taken at the university and they, along with the courts, are the body's tasked with making that determination. The police complaint process provides another avenue for the actions of individual officers to be investigated to determine whether provincial policing standards and regulations were followed. Our Commission also does not have the authority to direct the police or any police officer to make specific law enforcement decisions. All this to say that today's conversation will likely not provide all the answers that many in our community are hoping to hear. Our focus as a board is on the overall governance of protest responses and how we're ensuring that the police are responding to the protests in a way that reflects Calgarians' expectations. Today is also only the beginning of this conversation, not the end. If any action does come out of this post-event briefing, it will not be immediate. Police direction to the police service is a responsibility of the Commission and it needs to be provided thoughtfully and with all the information being carefully considered. As investigations into what occurred are still underway, we do not yet have all the information. With that introduction, I'll now turn it over to Chief Newfelt to begin the presentation.
Thank you Chair. As you say, I'll do the presentation for the protest one, but before I do that, just a quick acknowledgement to the 90th anniversary. Very exciting. I just want to say thank you to all the past and current Commission members for their contributions to the city and to the service. We really appreciate that. The second thing I want to do is just say thanks for all of the commitment and the visits to CPS, whether it be the recognition events or visiting units to see how Members do their work and also the ride-alongs. As you know, our Members always appreciate that, so I want to say thank you for that. And if you'll indulge me for just one second, I do have some special introductions to do. This Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police has an executive mentorship program that we participate in. The program supports the development of succession-ready leaders from agencies across Canada, so it includes a variety of different aspects, but one of them is Members actually visit a police chief somewhere in the country and actually work with that person for a week. So, this week I actually have the pleasure of having Superintendent Tyrone Sideroff from the Vancouver Police with me, Tyrone, as well as Inspector Tim Seiflering from the Regina Police as well. And the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police has a very similar program and so this week Superintendent Scott Boyd, who's here, over here, is working with Staff Sergeant Jason Graham and Jason's a Staff Sergeant from the Medicine Hat Police Service. So, working effectively and efficiently with governance bodies is an important part of police leadership and so it's not a coincidence that all of these gentlemen have ended up in Calgary this week. So, that's, we appreciate the fact that you're contributing as well to the development and their exposure as part of the program. Okay, Amber's got me straightened out here, so we'll get her to bring up the slide deck and then we shall begin. Yeah, it's in front here. I can get started as Amber brings it up as well. So, on October 7, 2023, Hamas attacked Israel and subsequently the war in Gaza began and since then, this very serious situation has had a profound impact on our community, as has been the case in all communities. Protests have occurred in many cities and countries around the world. In Calgary, there's been approximately 100 protests and demonstrations related to the situation in the Middle East since last October. Until recently, most of the protests have been lawful and peaceful and have occurred without any incidents at all. The overwhelming majority of the protests, oh, sorry, throughout this period CPS has worked to establish and maintain relationships with pro-Palestinian protest groups in order to facilitate these demonstrations while reducing the impacts on the communities where they're taking place. This is the approach that the CPS actually takes with all protests in the city. CPS has been clear with these groups and all groups about their rights as well as their responsibilities as it relates to protests in Calgary. Next slide, please. I appreciate the opportunity to present on this important topic. As a community, we find ourselves in a very complex time. Our political and social environments are highly polarised and quickly become charged. Communities are quite divided around particular issues of significance and protests and demonstrations have increased, not just on this issue, but a whole host of issues. The protests we are seeing today occur more frequently and they're much larger than those we saw previously, say prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. A new feature, or at least certainly for us in Calgary, is that due to the polarity that I referenced, many protests are now attracting active counter-protests by those who oppose the views of the original group. Social media is frequently a catalyst for individuals and groups that monitor the social media channels of those holding opposing views. They see what events are being planned and they mobilise in response. Also, we can see inflammatory rhetoric and commentary posted back and forth leading up to the events, which significantly turns up the temperature on these sorts of situations long before anybody gets to the place where a protest is going to occur. All of this has had a significant increase in the amount of volatility and the potential for conflict, violence, and negative impacts to the communities where protests are happening. All of this has also required the increased police involvement in protests and the commitment of significant resources to manage the risks. This creates a difficult environment for both the communities and the police. With all of that said, on May 9, CPS responded to the University of Calgary to address a complicated situation involving a protest by pro-Palestinian groups, which was intended to include the establishment of an encampment on the university's quad area. The positions taken by the U of C and CPS have been controversial, to say the least. I'll use the next few minutes to walk through the issues that I've set out on the slide here. A little bit of background, we'll discuss May 9 specifically and then we'll do a little bit of a look back at that response and then just provide a little bit of info on protests that have occurred since then. Next slide, Amber. The policing of protests and large-scale events in major cities is a reality for police services in these cities. It's not something that's done spontaneously, as the CPC is very aware. The function is professionally managed with a structured planning, operations, and review and governance functions being well-established. In our city and in CPS, the work's done by our Major Events and Emergency Planning Section. This area plans for more than 700 events, rallies, and protests every year. The last two years has seen a record number of protests in Calgary and the numbers for these events have been trending upward quite significantly since 2020. Now, 99% of protests are lawful and the job of the police is really to provide effective, unbiased policing to ensure the safety of the public and participants and ensuring the charter rights are upheld. Policing these events requires quite a few resources and those come from across the city and they're listed on the slide there, but Traffic Unit, Hawks, Public Safety Unit, those are the officers you often see holding the lines between protest groups, the Mounted Unit, mountain bikes, evidence gatherers, those are officers who film what happens at the events to ensure there's a clear and unbiased recording of the events as they unfold. During the planning for the events and protests, analysts within our Memes Unit also do risk and intelligence analysis for each event. Now, that assists us with proper resourcing and to effectively manage these events. This can include police intelligence that we receive through a variety of means as well as open source information searches and taking information that's available on social media. We have multiple ways of engaging protest organisers as well. Directly through our Memes planners is very common, through our police liaison teams and that's when we know we're going to have a protest, we have the PLTs, and then also we work closely with our Diversity Advisory Boards and our Diversity Resource Team. Now, DRT is most useful when we see protests that include specific communities. In the case of the Palestinian community and Muslim groups more generally, this is very much the case. Now, our goal here is to gather as much information about events as we possibly can to ensure we have enough resources to be able to make sure everybody's safe and the event can go off in the way that it's planned. We also work with our partners at the City of Calgary. They have an intra-departmental event team, or IET. They deal with permits and event applications. We work also with bylaw, we work with roads, transportation, and basically just trying to make sure that all of the appropriate resources that are going to be required are queued up for events. With respect to the U of C situation, there seems to be some sentiment that the U of C called police in response to some trespassers and that the police were essentially flying by the seat of their pants. I can show you here as we go forward that that is not what happened. I'll just add that as the conflict in the Middle East has evolved, people have been impacted in real time and protest and counter-protest activities have evolved in response to that. The protests occurring in Calgary don't occur in isolation. These are connected to broader national and international pro-Palestinian movements and activities that occur in one jurisdiction are quite likely to be replicated in another. Crowd sizes here in Calgary have fluctuated. We've seen between 150 and 3,000 people at the protests and main protest leaders vary in their levels of engagement and cooperation with police. Locally, some organisers are oriented toward activities that are specifically intended to disrupt communities and businesses. In short, they're interested in taking steps that create controversy in order to capture headlines and attention and the purpose of that is to create broader awareness for their cause. There've only been a number of incidents in Calgary that have led to investigations or enforcement action here at all. I'd reiterate that people are not arrested for protesting or gathering or expressing their views or anything like that. Where we have had issues, it's been when individuals engage in specific behaviours during what are sometimes otherwise a completely lawful protest, but those specific behaviours are not lawful. This would include anything from engaging in hate speech, which I know everybody here understands is not significantly clear-cut, but things like blocking access to roads or other critical infrastructure is much more clear-cut. I'm thinking of the blockage of the Fourth Avenue flyover late last year or damaging property in shopping malls or retail stores. We continue our engagement efforts with known protest organisers and have moved forward from these events and protests where we've had issues to the next one the week after. Recognising these protests are connected, we've also engaged with police leadership from across Canada and the US to monitor what's happening elsewhere. Calgary has consistently reported experiencing a relatively lawful and peaceful protest environment compared to other jurisdictions, but again, the situation is very complex. It's a constant balancing act that has to be done. On the one hand, the charter right to peaceful assembly and freedom of expression and on the other, broadly defined limits on charter rights that require us to take into account the impact on the rights of others, the general public, and things like access to buildings and roadways and transportation and other services. Next slide. CPS has always recognised the deep pain Calgarians are experiencing over the Hamas attack on Israel, the war in Gaza, and people's desire to gather and to speak out. Many of our community members and including CPS members themselves have family in the region and are otherwise impacted by this situation. The CPS also recognises the important role that universities play as institutions of learning and debate and in advancing social change. We respect the rights of students to peacefully protest and the service's presence at protest events is as much about protecting those exercising these rights as it is about enforcing applicable laws. No right, though, is absolute. Individual rights are subject to reasonable limitations, particularly, as I said, when it infringes on the legitimate rights of others to move about the city, control the use of their property, and to ensure their safety. Any unlawful or unsafe activity is addressed by CPS in a reasonable, unnecessary, reasonable, and proportionate manner. And although the service spends considerable time gathering information and intelligence and planning for protests, the effectiveness of the planning is impacted by established relationships and communication with community members and protest organisers. All of that to say, when protesters communicate with police about what they plan to do, what their objectives are, it helps everyone to ensure that the event is lawful and safe. Once a protest is underway, though, managing it means striking that dynamic balance. Incident commanders must respond to protests and counter-protester behaviours and they do that in real time. The incident command team is often privy to information the public does not have. The CPS makes its own independent decisions about our response in a risk-based manner and dictated by our legal authorities and protester behaviours. Just as incident response is heavily context-specific, so is the applicability of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. What constitutes a reasonable limit on the rights to expression and assembly depend upon the circumstances in a given case. It is important to remember that as complex as a legal landscape can be, the Charter does not remove the ability and also the obligation of the police to act rationally to resolve incidents safely. By mid-April, pro-Palestinian protesters began establishing protest camps on university campuses across North America. Now, most of the protests were focused on pressuring universities to disclose and end financial ties with companies linked to Israel. As I mentioned, pro-Palestinian protests here are connected with others across Canada and beyond. We are in contact with policing partners to keep abreast of what's happening elsewhere, as I said. In anticipation of pro-Palestinian protesters evolving toward post-secondary institutions and including encampments, CPS Memes began a dialogue with post-secondary institutions in April in Calgary. There had been a range of responses in different jurisdictions, as we know, and I think that's also one of the reasons why there's as much controversy about these situations as there is. I don't think there is necessarily a right or wrong approach. I think it's always context-specific, so the very practical So, the very practical reality, I think, for leaders in this arena, post-secondary institutions, is they need to consider and debate in the circumstances where none of the options that they choose are probably going to be well-received. We know that in cases where things don't go well or where problems arise, the police are quite likely to be called. The most problematic response by a post-secondary institution from a policing perspective is a non-response or a response that was unclear. The risk is that after police become involved, uncooperative students could find themselves in trouble, being charged, or facing criminal liability, where they believed something was permitted that perhaps wasn't. I commend the U of C for their clarity in terms of their approach to encampments. As it relates to the U of C, they provided all students with their protest policy in writing. As you can see on the slide, the correspondence is dated April 29th, 2024, and we believe that that went out to all students by May 3rd. It clearly outlines students have a right to protest, and it talks about free expression on the U of C campus. They're also clear about temporary structures and camping, and that is not allowed on the campus. Finally, it's also quite clear about potential consequences for non-compliance. In the week leading up to the May 9th event, the protesters provided a list of their demands to the university. Those are also included on the slide there for you as well. This is a very quick map, just to situate folks who may not be familiar with the layout. So, you can see the red circle, that's the quad area of the U of C, and that outlines the area in which protesters sought to establish the encampment. Next slide. So, I'm going to walk through a bit of a timeline of the events of May 9th, for the events that occurred there, beginning, as you can see, at 5:30 in the morning, and that's when protesters arrived to establish the encampment. But before I do that, I just want to go back and reiterate a couple of things. The response to this situation did not begin with the arrival of protesters at daybreak on May 9th. Nobody was surprised that this occurred. It wasn't a question of whether or not this would happen, it was really just a question of when it would happen. The other thing I want to point out again is that by now, the encampments were up and running at various post-secondary institutions across Canada and the US, and just as police were talking to one another, I'm quite sure that post-secondary institutions were also talking to one another about their experiences with encampments on their institutions. And the last thing is, again, the U of C had established their position on encampments on their property, and they had communicated this in writing to students the week before we get to May 9th. So, back to the timeline. On May 9th, at approximately 5:30, a small group of people, estimated at 20, began to erect tents near McEwen Hall first thing in the morning. Engagement with the protesters began right away through campus security. They were advised that they were permitted to protest, of course, in keeping with what the university had put out, but they could not camp. They were also verbally advised that the camp was considered a trespass on university property. A call to CPS for service from campus security was generated at 6:37 AM. The CPS initial response to this was limited to patrol officers only. The patrol officers from District 3 attempted to establish a dialogue with protesters right away, early in the morning. Under the oversight of the Real-Time Operations Center, or our RTOC, that's the Operations Center for the Service 24 hours a day, an incident command structure was established to manage this situation. It included an incident commander, a public safety unit commander, and incident command had access to legal counsel for consultation and advice as required while they conducted their own ongoing assessment. By shortly after 10:30 AM, there were 25 tents erected. Protesters were not agreeable to leaving, and many were not receptive to police attempts to discuss the situation. CPS supervisors anticipated where this may be heading and spoke again with U of C to confirm that they wanted the encampment to be removed. Calls went out on social media for more attendees to attend the encampment, and for supplies to be delivered, zip ties, ropes, generators, food, and such, to be brought to the encampment. And shortly after 1 o'clock, the crowd size had doubled to approximately 40 people. At 2:15, a U-Haul van arrived, and supplies were unloaded into the camp. Wooden pallets were used to build a fence and fortify the area around the camp, and again, it's clear that following the precedent in other jurisdictions, the protesters intended to establish a camp on university property for the long term. Next slide. These are just three of seven social media slides that went out. These are really a call for people to come to the encampment, to bring additional supplies that went out. Note in there, there's lots of benign items, but there's calls for riot shields, wooden pallets, walkie-talkies, and laser pointers, and this type of thing. So, just continuing with the timeline, by 8 PM, the number of protesters was estimated to be about 150, and CPS negotiators made repeated calls on a loud hailer advising those present that their safety was a priority, that they were trespassing on private property, and that they must leave the camp. Protesters were chanting that they would not leave, and shortly thereafter, PSU members arrived at the protest. So, up until into the afternoon there, or into the evening, the Public Safety Unit was not deployed until later in the evening. At 8:30, protesters reinforced the barricades around the camp with extra rope and zip ties. Throughout the PSU engagement, protest leaders encouraged participants to ignore the attempts by police to discuss and negotiate their departure. The primary protest leader is someone known local activist who's led numerous pro-Palestinian protests since October. Our intelligence indicated that the protest, and specifically the establishment of the encampment, was being specifically influenced by individuals who were not students of the U of C. Further negotiations occurred, including with a community elder who advised that some people wanted to leave, and so the members stopped their advancements, and those people were given time to leave. By shortly after 9 PM, the crowd had reduced by half through voluntary departures, and there was estimated to be approximately 60 people remaining. Again, ongoing efforts by members at the scene to encourage people to leave voluntarily did reduce the number of people who remained at the end. At approximately 9:20, there was a meeting of the protesters in the middle of camp, and it was clear that they were not going to leave. Projectiles in the form of bottles were thrown at PSU members at this point, and then there was a period of time that the crowd settled between 9:30 and about 11:00. Negotiations continued through that time to try to get to voluntary compliance, and negotiators broadcast that protesters were still being given an opportunity to leave. Next slide. So, it initially appeared that around 9:40, the protesters were packing up, but very few people actually left, and the tents remained erected. Some tents were dismantled at around 10:20, and then shortly before 11:00, communication was still ongoing. There was approximately 25 or 30 protesters remaining in the camp, and the CPS members on the scene made it clear that if they did not leave at that point, that arrests would be made. Having been told clearly and repeatedly that they were trespassing and would not be permitted to remain, there's no question that those that were remaining understood what they had been told and the potential consequence, including the potential for arrest. As PSU members moved forward to clear the camp, more projectiles were thrown by protesters. Protesters continued to link arms and push toward police. Some protesters grabbed at officer shields and attempted to aggressively push back. It appeared to the command team that a group of protesters were deliberately attempting to make physical contact with police. So, I'll pause here just to state what should be obvious. This is not a good situation. This is exactly the situation that officers worked throughout the entire day to avoid. But the situation was anything but as spontaneous and anything but a surprise to the 25 or so people who decided to stay and mix it up with the police. And as I say, good for those officers and the incident commanders whose persistence to prioritize communication and negotiation throughout the day reduced the number of people remaining who were present at the end to 25 or 30 from the estimated 150 who were there just hours before. At 11:08 PM, arrests began, and these efforts were also met with resistance. At 11:15, because of the lack of cooperation and an increase in volatility, PSU members on the front line were approved to use pepper balls, 15 were used, and OC grenades, four of those were used. The objective of using these tools was to move the individuals back, creating more distance between the officers and those intent on resisting, and this eliminated the need for an escalation of use of force against those resisting. Protesters were warned before these munitions were ever used. The intervention was effective, as it was intended, and de-escalated the situation, with the protest group dispersing almost immediately. The PSU members continued to move forward towards the LRT station to prevent a regrouping of the crowd. By 11:35 PM, small groups of people remained but did not regroup, and the Public Safety Unit was demobilized. The camp was secured so that the university could arrange for a cleanup. Next slide. Just by way of quick overview, four people, you see the ages there, were arrested for trespass to premises. All of them were released with a ticket. Nobody was criminally charged here. I think that's significant. The response was to really try to make sure that nobody was arrested and nobody faced criminal charges. They did not in this case. None of the individuals arrested are current university students or faculty. Just a quick word on the munitions there, the OC grenades that you see there. Well, actually, I'll speak first about the pepper balls. Pepper balls are about the size of a marble. They're lodged from an air supply launcher, similar to, I guess, a paintball gun, and the small balls contain a compound that is a synthetic version of oleoresin capsicum or pepper spray. Direct impact by pepper ball equates to about 10 to 12 foot-pounds of energy, and if you compare that to something like an Arwin, which is a less lethal use of force, an Arwin has over 150 foot-pounds of energy upon impact. An OC grenade is a hand-deployed device that delivers light, sound, and a small amount of synthetic version of OC spray, so same as the pepper balls. There are no projectiles inside this device, nor is there tear gas, nor does the device make physical contact with individuals at the scene. The OC disperses quickly with little residual effects, and both devices are used specifically to disperse crowds. No flashbangs or rubber bullets were used during the May 9th event, contrary to what has been reported repeatedly in the media, and the CPS is not aware of any batons being used on anybody. Some have expressed concern about PSU members wearing what's been described as riot gear. PSU members were wearing approved personal protective equipment for their safety. That includes protective armor, helmets, and round shields. It also includes body-worn cameras. The PPE worn by the PSU members is designed for crowd-control situations. It's been used in Calgary since about 2011, and it's been deployed consistently in all manner of large protests and events since that time. It's nothing we haven't seen before. More traditional heavy armor, or what's sometimes referred to as hard tack, has not been deployed in Calgary for many years. Next slide. Following the removal of the camp on May 9th, we received through professional standards a total of five concerns. One of those was a formal complaint, and that was received yesterday. None of the people who submitted a concern reported suffering an injury, and it's unclear whether anyone who submitted a concern, on the concern side, was even present at the event. PSS is following our standard procedure by conducting the investigative backgrounding on the event itself, and PSU conversely received, or Professional Standards Section conversely received 47 compliments from citizens thanking the service for removing the camp. Now, this is not about polarity or populism or anything like that, it just shows the divide and the fact that reasonable people can disagree and do in relation to what's happened here. The government of Alberta, I think Chair You referenced it, has requested ACERT to review the events of May 9th to ensure there were no inappropriate uses of force. The CPS understands that ACERT is working to determine whether social media accounts and reporting of serious injury, at least insofar as that term's used in the Police Act, are in fact accurate, and if so, ACERT would investigate the circumstance leading to those injuries. The service welcomes ACERT's review and is cooperating fully. So, since that event there, there's been a number of pro-Palestinian protests and other protests that have occurred in the community. The most notable probably was May 12th at the University of Calgary. There was 400 or 500 attendees there with speeches from a US-based activist as well. And so, there's been lots of reporting about the fact that CPS or the U of C were trying to prevent people from protesting. There's been a number, as I say, of protests that have occurred in the city since that time. The issue here was not about protests in any way, shape, or form. The issue here on May 9th was about encampments. So, that needs to be clearly stated. And it underscores the point, what's happened before and since underscores the point that CPS supports and facilitates lawful protests, and they continue to occur regularly as they did before May 9th. Next slide. And just wrapping it up quickly, the CPS has continued to engage with community following the May 9th event, including conversations that I've had personally with community leaders. The event at the U of C has definitely strained relationships, there's no question about that. We recognize there was an opportunity for more proactive engagement with CPS community advisors throughout the day on May 9th. Because there was a lot of time spent, we could have done that and should have done that. This includes the service's Anti-Racism Action Committee, the Middle Eastern Police Advisory Committee, and other advisory boards and circles. The CPS will continue to protest, police protest events in a thoughtful and adaptive manner dictated by the circumstances of each of those events, and we definitely do think objectively about these things. We know that the actions we take, as well as the actions that we don't take, will be polarizing. Some people in groups will be very angry, and others will be very enthusiastically positive. That's the complex environment that we're in. Being the police, though, means not taking sides and not being influenced by specific positions or political viewpoints, regardless of how strongly they may be held. Being the police means serving all Calgarians and doing that equitably. Calgarians need to have the confidence that we will do our job to maintain public safety and order regardless of the degree of polarization or pressure that may exist. Moving forward, we will continue to act definitively, to communicate clearly, and to enforce the law in a manner respectful of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and also in a way that balances everybody's rights as well as responsibilities. We remain committed to ongoing relationship and dialogue with our community, to protest groups, to the CPC, to our community partners, and to communicate with anybody wishing to discuss these important and complex issues. I'll stop there, Chair, and take any questions you might have. Last slide, Amber.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong to start, and then other questions?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief. I'll start off by reflecting as a counselor for the area. We heard a lot of comments and conversations in the communities around there, and the concerns of not just what happened on campus, but obviously the overflow. The comments that I did get back from the community associations of University Heights particularly was favorable, so thank you for, on their behalf, for the service. My questions, and I also have to preface as well, I've had a good conversation with President Ed McCauley from the university, and John Alho from the university as well, and got their side of the equation, but this is the first time I had an opportunity to speak to yourself. You started the presentation talking about the timelines of 5:30 onwards, but you said earlier that this is not a surprise, this was well-known, and that. And then as you evolved into the conversation about what happened, I guess my first question is, where was the handoff between what the university did versus them bringing you in, and then the service then taking control of the situation? Can you just talk about the transition? And secondly, is that transition from the person, the institution reporting, and you typical handled that way, or is it different?
Yeah, I would say this was fairly typical, except for the pre sort of planning. So, again, there was discussions between the police service and post-secondary institutions in Calgary beginning in April, in anticipation that this would come to Calgary. We don't take a position on what sort of posturing an educational institute may take. Again, for us, it's really important that it be clear to individuals as to what that is. So, like any other private property, I suppose, what ends up happening is where there's security, and in this case, the university has their own campus security, so they would be the first line of sort of response in this situation. And that was the case here. Campus security engaged with the individuals that were beginning to erect the tents and gave them the notice that this would be protesting, or sorry, that this would be trespassing. And as a result of that, they got the read that they weren't going to be leaving. That's when the call to the police came, and again, there was discussions. This is not your typical trespassing situation where you've got somebody that's in somebody's yard, or in the mall, or whatever, that's generally fairly straightforward. This is one where clearly this is escalating as we're talking. There's discussions then between the police that come on scene, they're not having a lot of luck either, and that's why the RTOC made the decision to stand up the incident command team, so that the RTOC can continue to police the city, and they can have a specific commander on this that can walk through the steps and manage this particular situation. But basically, the handoff to the police service from the university is at the point where representatives of the university, in this case, campus security, are no longer able to, they've given their warnings, and they've tried to get people to leave, and they're not able to gain compliance.
Okay. One of the questions I put to President McCauley was, if it was known ahead of time that there could be protests, it could be insurgent sort of behavior like that, were the contingencies thought of as to what sort of response could be done? And I'll just hypothesize that I did with President McCauley, without saying, if you know they're going to do this, could we go ahead of them by saying, you know what? We welcome protests, but here's the protocols of, or the locations, or the types of risks, or the types of things, so everybody could do it in a safe, reliable sort of way. And as President McCauley said, well, we did try to do that, except where they chose to do it, which is in the quad, which is... they chose to do it, which is in the quad, which is outside of where I believe is a daycare or summer day camp school program that was happening there, that that was probably what was different than what they had anticipated. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, I would think so. I haven't talked to President McCauley about that aspect of it, so I'm relying on your assessment of it as far as that goes. But again, I guess I would just reiterate that the university clearly did that, given the letter that they provided to students relative to protests and encampments. I mean, clearly, that was in response to the fact that there was knowledge of what was happening across the country and beyond. So, again, I'm just appreciative of the clarity that was provided to students here, and then, like I say, when there was non-compliance, that's when they called the police.
Okay. My only last question is, the words from Mr. McCauley again was, it was signaling as trespassing, and as trespassing, that was the reason, the rationale for calling you in? The comment I get from the community is, the University of Calgary is public institution lands, and I could be walking through there for no other purpose other than just walking through the property. Is that considered trespassing or not? And in the eyes of law, is trespassing on public institution land considered that? How do you determine, I guess, how do you determine when you walk on public institution land that is truly trespassing versus just passing through?
It's a great question, Commissioner, and I guess what I would say is, it's certainly one that our incident commanders were asking as well in their assessment of this. So, I can tell you that that's one of the complexities of this. So, when we see protests occur, you know, in what I will call, if there's a continuum, what I will call in public spaces, so outside the municipal building, outside Harry Hayes, that type of thing, there's a lot of leeway given around protesting. If you go all the way to the other end of the continuum, I'm thinking about your backyard. If somebody goes in your backyard and you come out and say, hey, leave my yard, they're required to leave. If they don't leave, you then would be, you would be quite justified in calling the police, and the police would come and remove them as trespassers. I would say in the middle of that somewhere, there is, you know, university land. And so, again, we've got the difference between public and private universities, you've got the fact that the universities are responsible for making sure there's a safe space there and that type of thing. So, I would say that the universities, especially if they're publicly funded, lie somewhere in the middle of all of that, but these were all things that were discussed in terms of the police looking at their authorities and making their assessment about what actions they were going to take there.
I think that was, and that's actually where we ended up our conversation, was that it was really more about public safety of the students, of the faculty, of the public, of the kids, you know, youngsters that were there, that was probably the more appropriate characterization of the concern more than trespassing. So, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief, for your thorough outline of what occurred a few weeks ago. I have a few questions, so Chair, if you need to cut me off, cut me off, but the first question I have was around the timing. You know, the first call, they came in at 5:30, and then at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning, you had 25 tents set up. But as you went throughout the day and more people arrived, et cetera, and then nothing was done to remove people, I mean, I know warnings were given, but nothing was done till 11:30 at night, if I'm correct. I'm just curious why the removal did not happen earlier when you had a smaller amount of people, the calls had not gone out for more people to come. Why was nothing not done at 6:30, 7:00 when the 25 tents were there?
Yeah, it's a good question, and you'll notice in my slide there in relation to sort of lessons learned. I'm not so sure that we would have began a removal at, you know, 6:30, 7:00 type thing when we first, when the first call was put in, but certainly, I think too, we could have looked at doing something sooner. It's hard, you know, like the social media information that went out, we would have only had that in hindsight, right? Like after it got out, we would have become aware of it. I think one of the challenges was officers initially were trying to, I'll use the word negotiate, but I think actually just trying to educate in particular students. Like the reality of it is, some of the people that were there, we know from dealing with them every weekend, that they know this, right? So, some of the people are going to make their own decisions and they're going to leave or not. It was very important to us to make sure that students who may not be fully informed had the ability, had good information, and if they wanted to leave, would make the decision to leave on their own beforehand and not get caught up in something that they hadn't intended to. At the time that that kind of dialogue was going on, more people were arriving, and so suddenly, it becomes difficult, did we talk to all the people or didn't we? So, at some point, the incident commander as well begins to decide that clearly this is ramping in a direction that is not going to be a good direction, and begins to make a call for resources, the resources that he or she thinks they need to be able to handle this, and so they wait for those things to come in. So, looking back to me, as I look at it, one of the key things is like when a truckload of pallets pulls up and is being unloaded, there should be an intervention there to make sure that doesn't happen, but again, that's one of the things we'll take away from this.
The other question I had was, you mentioned that no students were arrested, and I guess in the community, it's maybe that message hasn't come through very clearly. And you also said that it was predominantly one instigator or one organizer. So, how has that message been shared with the community afterwards and with your contacts through the diversity resources team and all that to share that message much more openly beyond just today?
I would say this, and it's a great question. I think right now, my assessment of where we're at is that like this has very much strained relationships, and I'm not going to sugarcoat that. So, my experience in my discussions with some of the community members is that they're not in a place to hear some of those things right now. And so, we'll wait for a better time to do that. We've tried to communicate those things, I don't think it's being heard right now, to be honest, and so I think there's probably a better time. We know it's a very emotional time right now, and so we'll, I mean, I think the only thing we can do is wait for a better opportunity.
And I guess, just sort of going back to that, on one of your lessons learned slide, you said that one of the lessons learned was going back and speaking with your Middle Eastern Advisory Board that the service has and with some other groups. But I will just say this, this has been going on since October 7. So, I'm not sure why it's a lesson learned now when it's been going on for such a long time, as well as other world events that took place previously, why the proactive communication wasn't happening before, especially if the UFC knew that this was coming, why the community had not been chatted with previously to have these conversations.
No, sorry if I wasn't clear. Those conversations had been going on, obviously, this has been, we're 100 protests into this, and it's been going on since October of 2023. So, there have been those discussions with the boards for sure. What the boards were concerned about was the fact that that, the encampment where the students were, many of them may have had influence on young people and people who were involved and could have helped out, and given the fact that we were initially engaged at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning, but didn't actually take action until 11:00 at night, like they appreciate that there's not always opportunity for us to make those calls because of the way that events unfold, but they felt in this case, we could have, and I would agree that we could have. So, I was speaking more about this particular event than more broadly.
Okay, and just one last question, and then I'll let my colleagues answer, ask questions. One last one, it's super quick. I'm curious, again, there's protests happening across the country at various universities. Those have not been removed. I'm curious what your counterparts are saying in other locations and how those are still going, but this was chosen to be removed, and the other ones are still standing.
Well, I would say that each situation is a little bit different, and I think the timing of it makes it, the considerations different too. So, as I talked to some of my colleagues, there, the positions that were taken, the positions are not the police positions firstly, obviously, it's for the universities. Some of them take the position that they're going to allow the encampments to stay there, and so that's a fine position for them to take in their circumstances, so the police aren't really engaged. Others, you know, other institutions allowed it to become entrenched or to start, and now they're having to go through the process of applying for injunctions to the courts and this type of thing. There's some pain involved with all of that in the sense that, you know, McGill is one example. I think they had to pay for other facilities to take their convocations off-site because of the encampments there and that type of thing. So, I think now you're seeing them go to the courts, you know, I don't know if they initially thought this will be a couple of days or whatever, but I understood earlier today in Vancouver at UBC, the folks in the encampment, you know, took over an intersection as well, which required a large-scale police response as well. So, I think, you know, everybody's learning a lessons along the way, but a number of these had been established in other post-secondary institutions already, and again, I'm certain that the local post-secondary folks were talking and about challenges. I mean, this is not easy, as I said before, I'm aware just from media reporting that the other day, university presidents were testifying in front of a senate committee about what they're doing about antisemitism. So, if you were to allow an encampment, and then there's a bunch of students and faculty and people who are concerned and feeling unsafe, you know, you've let people down there at the other side. If you don't allow the encampments, you've let people down on the other side that are protesting the situation in the Middle East. So, this is a very, very difficult situation for them as well. So, I think they're working their way through it like everybody else, and it's super complex.
Thank you. So, I'm going to Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Tangay. Thanks.
Thanks very much. So, there's a Court of Appeal or a Supreme Court decision related to protests on public spaces on university campuses. It started with actually a bunch of anti-abortion protesters, so that decision's a bunch of years old, so that conversation is long gone. What did our response cost?
I don't know, Commissioner Campbell, this was earlier this month, so we haven't tallied that.
Okay. So, if we could, if we could, if we could look at an opportunity to correlate those, to, sorry, calculate those costs, please, for our response to go with the report?
So, just to be clear, we'll wait for direction from the commission as opposed to taking anything away from.
So, that's why I'm looking at the chair, because that's my eyeball saying that I think I'd like to make a motion that we can calculate those costs, so I think I need to do that to enable the chief and his team to do that accounting.
So, I'm going to give a bit of time to create that motion and then finish the discussion, and we'll come back to that.
Thank you. I do have another question. So, there was a lot of discussion about whether folks were students or not as they were on campus. That's irrelevant in my mindset. They're human and they're worthy of care, they're Calgarians, full stop, doesn't matter if they were students. My concern is with the proportionality and the necessity, the reasonableness and legality of the response, and for me, the comparison in my mind is how the police have responded to other dangerous situations at the University of Calgary specifically, and when the University of Calgary has requested police response and what that looks like. So, explain to me, how did the University of Calgary balance its response to sexual assaults on campus with the coordinated police response to the pro Palestinian protest?
I'm afraid you'd have to ask that question to the university, because I wouldn't even be able to dig into that.
Thank you very much, Chief. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tangay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief, for your thorough presentation and review of the situation. Just a couple of questions. If there were no blockades and tents, do you think that police would have been involved at all?
I don't think so. Obviously, the issue here and the reason for the call at 6:30, 7:00 was the setting up of the tents and the fact that, again, for campus security was well aware of the developing situation, the communication that had gone out. Like, I don't think that it was coincidence that people showed up at 5:20 in the morning with tents, so I think they read the handwriting on the wall quite early. So, the focus here was really the encampments, but I think if that is a protest that occurs throughout the day, very similar to the one that occurred on May 12 and in the days that followed, I don't think there's a need for police response.
Thank you, and just a follow-up. You know, you mentioned the usual suspects, and you kind of knew some of those suspects were there who were not students. It seems like some of the pictures, there were a lot of middle-aged and elderly people in the pictures that don't look like students, but that could be, I was older as a student at times too. The arrests, the four arrests, they were not students, is that correct?
Yeah, not current students of the U of A.
And so, there was mention that, you know, people pulling on shields and maybe some people resisting arrest, nobody was arrested for resisting arrest or for any other of those types of behaviors?
Not in this case. There were four charges of trespassing, and people were subsequently released with tickets.
So, the reason I keep asking, you know, I've read all the letters that were sent to CPC, there were mentions of flashbangs and rubber bullets and reported injuries, but there doesn't seem to be any of those being reported from yourself, injuries, I don't believe there are any reported injuries. So, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Siddiqui, and how do we appropriately bring the correct information versus the significant amount of misinformation that's on social media and maybe even in our current media?
Yeah, so, great question. So, certainly, we knew this conversation was coming up, so we haven't done anything publicly prior to this since the, after the protest itself. We have had lots of community conversations, and the intent was, you would have seen in your package, the letter that I sent to the Chair in relation to the events as well, we knew that would go out in the package to the media as well. So, that was sort of the first step at a factual layout of what happened.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have now Commissioner Winess, and then I've got also Commissioner Ogle, Nice and Jordan, Sung, and Campbell, so we'll need to move through these a little bit.
Thanks. I'll keep it, no preamble. So, what's the difference between the crowd control PPE and riot gear?
Yeah, I think just vernacular. So, riot gear oftentimes, when you hear people talk about that, they're referring to sort of hard tack. There's bigger, more bulky equipment. In years gone by, there would be people that would be in crowd control situations, there would be people that would be in that type of gear, but they were often, you know, staged somewheres away from where the incident was happening, usually never to become involved in the previous protest environment. The gear that our PSU people use is sort of stepped down from that, it's the gear that you would see out on the streets on the weekends type thing. That's why they sometimes call them the Sunday cops, because they see them dressed in this gear there on Sundays. So, it's personal protective equipment, it's a step up from, you know, what I'm wearing now, but it's not intended to be.
Is it a choice to use it in situations like this to reduce the like potential for short-term, long-term disability or medical claims from officers?
Well, I think that's an outcome of the potential there, the safety is the issue, right? Crowd control situations can be dynamic, and it's interesting how sometimes people feel like they can throw things or they can do things to police officers because they're wearing protective equipment. So, that's interesting. That is not the case, like that is all bad, and you shouldn't do that. But those officers are there oftentimes, as was the case here, projectiles come from well back in the crowd where we don't know and maybe we don't see them coming, and so, yes, we're very concerned about the safety of officers at these situations.
Awesome. It's been reported that press weren't allowed to get near the encampment, did that occur and/or were their press allowed at points in the day?
You know, councillor, my reading of this was from press folks who seemed to be in the mix. I think some of them were told to get back at certain times because they were quite close, which for a lot of, you know, veteran press people, that's not uncommon. They want to get as close as they possibly can in these situations, and when we need them to move, we tell them to move, and they generally do. So, I think they were there. I think there was probably some times they were too close from my read of it, but I don't think there were any issues around it.
Okay, and then, given the time we've, or the number of protests we've seen in Calgary, there's been a lot, what was the threshold that was crossed with this one that required the use of other tools, such as, what are they, flashbangs or?
Encampments firstly. So, if this would have, again, just been a regular protest at the UFC, that it would have been, you know, it would have been just another day, and there wouldn't have been an issue. Clearly, in this case, the encampment portion, the establishment of the encampment was the issue, and so then, when you talk about the threshold of when did we move from just having, you know, regular patrol officers go and talk to people, to having the public safety unit, it was because we had to call in additional resources, so we didn't take from all over the city. And there was enough people that we were concerned about the size of the crowd initially, but again, through patience and dialogue and that type of thing, the numbers went down quite substantially before the end.
And then, this is a philosophical one, and because we also have visitors, let's unpack this one. Public perception is seeing encampments happening outside the city limits and beside the highway. They're still allowed to stay there. How is, how are police and enforcement tackling that discrepancy of one encampment's okay, and then on university campuses, it's not? And I know it's a hard one to answer in a short time here, but it's a question.
Yeah, no, it's not that bad. I think it's a really good question that's on the mind of many people. So, you're talking about like the acts, the tax protests that are on Highway 2 and Highway 1 as an example. So, again, public property, public space, you notice that on Highway 1, when they were first established and they were blocking the highway, the RCMP were out there and all of the same sort of pictures, the RCMP and their tac troupe and in gear and stuff like that were out there. RCMP and their tac troupe and in gear and stuff like that were out there, not because they were camping or protesting, it was because they were blocking the highway. Now, those behaviors, and again, this is where you can have behaviors inside of a lawful protest that are, that become problematic. The behaviors of blocking the traffic and that type of thing, those subsided. And so now you don't see police around there anymore. So there is a higher level of, or a higher threshold for tolerance in public spaces where the impact on the public is, is not a big deal. So I'm assuming that the RCMP on Highway One and Two aren't getting a lot of complaints about, about that. But if there was behaviors that started to generate complaints or impact others' rights, you would see the police engage.
And because it's public land, not private property?
Exactly.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Can I just ask, just before we go to our next question, I've heard the comment about there were flashbangs and there weren't flashbangs. Can you please clarify what you see from your side at this point?
Yeah, so there were no flashbangs used in this event. Flashbangs are a different tool used by our tactical team. They're, they're what they call a diversionary device, if you will. These are different than that. These OC grenades, and I hate the word grenades, but that's what they're called. You know, sounds very military, but they're grenades, they're small handheld devices. And again, they will emit, they will emit a bang, but they're not the flashbang. So again, there's, it's, there's a bit of nuance there. But the idea behind these things is that they do, they do release the OC spray and they do surprise people. The point of this is to actually get the crowd to move, where you have the crowd engaging police in a way that is, is dangerous now. Like I say, when you have the crowd and the police tussling back and forth, the police are going to escalate their tactics. Now, if they use force, escalate force on people, there can be injuries and this type of thing. If you can use a tool, something like this, that will actually be exclusionary in the sense that it will get people to move out of an area because of the irritant, now we create space and there's no need to escalate force. So I think that's a very positive thing.
Okay. I was just curious, because there's two different terms that the general public would have no idea the difference between.
For sure.
Okay. So I have Commissioner Ogil, Nice and Jordan, Sang, and Campbell still to come. So please, go ahead.
I'll be real quick, Chief, and I commend you. The letter that you wrote, Chair Cornet, is very fulsome, and thank you for that. I would encourage anyone that's interested in this incident to read it. My question is quick, and it sort of follows on what Commissioner Campbell said. There's a lot of noise or a lot of information around this situation that a lot, a lot of the attendees of the protest weren't from Calgary. Were those arrested, all Calgarians?
I believe they were, and nor have I had any indication that a lot of the attendees were not from Calgary. Certainly, there were students, like anybody that would say that, you know, it wasn't students, it was, no, no, there were students there for sure. There's no question about that. But there were also people that were non-students. But in terms of people from outside of Calgary, I don't have an awareness that there was a large number of those.
And could you just confirm the charges laid on the floor that were arrested?
I can, because they're all the same. Trespassing under the provincial legislation. So it's, it's a, it's a violation ticket with a voluntary penalty. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, because I think it did help provide a lot of information that hopefully will get out there. My question relates to, you know, it's, again, public perception. Whatever CPS says will never be fully kind of believed by both sides. And I guess the question comes with the ACERT investigation. Do you have any indication, and having lots of familiarity with ACERT and the time it takes, do you have any perception of where it is on their priority list to look at this so that it's not hanging over either the service or the protest movement itself?
Yes, thanks for the, the question, Commissioner. So like, I don't control the priorities of ACERT, but I will give you this assurance, is that that was certainly something we brought forward right away. Like, we said, look, if there's injuries out there, because that's what we heard from community, was that, we said, look, we're not getting complaints of injuries, and so we're not, like, if we don't get it, we can't respond to it. So we heard that some people were uncomfortable coming to the police service that they had the conflict with. So we supported the idea that an independent agency would get involved. So we support ACERT and that sort of thing. But I do think they're trying to scope, like, firstly, a review to see what comes in, and then if there's pieces that need to be investigated, they'll scope that in in Phase Two. And I think that's going to your question. Like, they're very busy, we know that. This is very important. This isn't something that anybody will be benefiting from if it takes three years to complete. So, so that's definitely been, been communicated, and I know that it's been heard.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sang.
Thank you, Chair. My question to Chief is, compared to the Beltline protests in March 2022, where the city had to apply for injunction and took some time, and then CPS can get involved with all the enforcement tools, but in this case, it happens within one day and without any crowd involvement. Can you comment on the differences?
Yes, I'm happy to. So your point about the Beltline in 2022, I would say that that was 2021 and 2022. The protest environment for, certainly for CPS, but I think in general, has evolved a lot. Like, prior to the pandemic, it was a very different protest environment that we dealt with here in Calgary than we did sort of into and after the pandemic. So when I think about the Beltline, the thing that we learned from that, because the Beltline, in my mind, was akin, it was our local sort of trucker convoy type thing. What we failed to do there was we were trying to uphold people's rights to protest during the pandemic, but we did not take into enough consideration the impact those activities were having in that community. And so that is something that has changed in terms of, you know, policing writ large in terms of that balance. And I would, I would tell you that that was, that was a change, and we were probably too slow to adapt. And so that's why that, that is different today. The other thing is, too, when we talk about that complex balance, that was happening, again, in public spaces, on, you know, on streets and stuff like that. It was impacting businesses and that type of thing, but it wasn't on arguably private property. So that's another difference between these two, right? We didn't, we get the call from the university, because they've been very clear with the, with the university community about what is going to be permitted, and then they considered this trespassing. And so they called us because they were not getting compliance. So again, little bit different, but also I think the world has changed a lot since 2021 and 2022. All right, thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Adirdran next, and then Commissioner Campbell, and then Commissioner Siddiqui.
Thank you, Chief. My question is around the Incident Commander Center. So I'm just curious. I'm assuming that the Incident Commander is a member of CPS, but I'm wondering, given the location of the, of the incident, was wondering why you don't have a representative from the university as a part of the stakeholders within the Incident Commander Center?
Sure. I just missed the end of that. Why don't we have who in there?
Part of the university community as a part of the people, stakeholders in the Incident Command Center, at least, yeah.
That's another great question. Thank you for it. So, so we do work very closely. It doesn't matter what kind of protest we're working with. As I said, we work with bylaw, we work with, you know, other city departments, transit, peace officers. But if the police are going to become involved, and again, I don't want to give the impression, or I want you to take away the fact that we did, we don't just go and do the bidding of the university or whoever calls us. We have to conduct an independent assessment about what our authorities are. So if we're going to send our people into a situation like this, and this is what's happened, right? So it's a controversial situation, and so they're rewarded with an ACERT investigation in relation to this, or firstly, a review. But this is, there can be consequences for our members. So we are going to make sure, if we send our members and we're making decisions about police authorities and what our members are going to do in our city, we will be in control of that. Now, that doesn't mean we won't work collaboratively and that, that other agencies can't have input, but if we're putting our members in harm's way in that sense, we'll be making the decisions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Siddiqui will wrap up.
Thanks very much. The premier elected to opine on the response by CPS. So that was a bit unusual, and it concerned me that there may be political interference. So two simple questions. Was she consulted on the, on the response by CPS? Was she consulted by the University of Calgary on the police response?
So you're not going to be surprised to know that I can only answer one of those questions. The answer in relation to CPS is no. That would be inappropriate. So no, for sure. And in relation to the, the university, I couldn't even begin to speak for them.
Thanks very much, Chief. Appreciate the response. Back to you, Chair.
Commissioner Siddiqui.
Chief, if I can just go back to the community piece again, because you mentioned that this has caused a lot of damage. And there's been a lot of great work done by the service and specifically Deputy Chief McClellan's bureau in terms of building these relationships, not only with the Muslim community or the Jewish community, but other diverse communities in Calgary. What are the plans? Because you said that you feel like people are not ready to hear the message yet, but we're almost, you know, almost a month out from the protest. Sort of what are your proactive pieces over the next few days and weeks to ensure that that bridge building starts again? And I don't know if this is right or wrong, but I've also heard that there's been comments around, we don't want the, you know, the service in the mosques anymore, which I find absolutely horrible. So I'm just wondering, what are the next steps now?
Yeah, so we continue to talk to community, and I've met with Deputy McClellan and members from her, her bureau with the Middle Eastern Advisory Council, and they're excellent. But when I talk about the fact that they're not ready, I don't necessarily mean about May 9. What I mean is that as things develop in the Middle East, like, the community ebbs and flows. And right now, I think that it's a difficult time. And so there's a lot of emotionality around, around that situation. So whether or not now is a good time to do that is an open question. But I, but I will give you this. The, certainly the community that, or the advisory board certainly respects the fact that there's two things going on. One is, we've long had a relationship with them that's positive. There's lots of sort of issues that the community deals with, and there's lots of benefit in working with police to address issues around youth and all, and all the things, right? Employment for youth, good relationships with the police. So they get that. They want to do training and that type of thing to help with cultural competence. And so there's all these priorities that we had before the conflict in the Middle East. And so we're all collectively sort of in it, in it, trying to manage this conflict or navigate the, the outcomes of the conflict in Calgary. And so, but we have, have an agreement that our relationship is very important, and it's bigger than what's going on just there. So we realize that, like any relationship, there's going to be times where there's going to be some friction, but we want to be in it. So I am confident that we'll continue to have dialogue and that type of thing moving forward. There's more discussions around clarity, around the terms of reference, and what would we do in situations like this if it happened again? And so those, those conversations are ongoing.
Thank you. And with that, we have a motion for words provided by Commissioner Campbell. Amber, if you could share the motion and what the words are there? So the motion on the table is moved in second to direct the service to provide at the June 2024 CPC meeting a report of the costs related to the protest event and a response that was reported on Agenda 5.1. So, Amber? Sorry, comment?
May I just, because I believe in the chief's presentation, he mentioned that there were 143 protests year-to-date for 2024 already. So I'm hoping that we can make some distinctions. So if they bring back, if CPS were to bring back data for the 134 or protests to date, but do some demarcation for the May 9 event, that would be helpful, if I can make that amendment.
Sorry, the amendment is to include a total plus the individual?
Thank you.
All right. So that motion is on the table, and we'll amend it to say a total year-to-date, which I know that you compile as you go along, plus a separation for the May 9 protest. And so with that amendment, are you moving that, Commissioner Campbell?
I am. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. And then, do we have a second for that motion? Commissioner Sang? And I'll ask for, whoops, the votes. Okay. So we'll get the amendments done properly so that we've got them on the table, but I think that's understood. And those in favor of this motion?
Point of order, Chair.
Yes, please.
Could we actually have a discussion on this motion prior to it being voted on?
Sure. Yes, please. Go ahead.
Thanks. I have concerns about kind of isolating this particular protest, and I know that this is a highly-charged area, but there are many other highly-charged incidents that we don't ask individualized finance information from. So I would stand against this motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tangay and then Commissioner Ogil.
I'm just going to echo everything that Commissioner Nielsen just finished saying. I don't understand why we would be pulling apart financial information for one incident, and I feel like it'll set a precedence of increased amount of work and unnecessary politicization of, of events into financials. I vote against as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogil.
Yeah, the same. I think that if we need to reassess forecasting of our budget mid-year, then that's a discussion at the Finance Committee based on, on escalation of certain events that we have to take outside of the regular budgeting forecast. But I echo their comments as well. I just, I don't, I would not support the motion.
Okay. Commissioner, so I'll go to Commissioner Campbell to respond, and then Commissioner Wong.
So this is a major policing event, and for major policing events, there is an addition, there is a separate budget and itemized budget for those. We had a budget for, say, for example, WPC, that was, that was separated from our, from our current budget. In previous years, when we, Commissioner Tang, Commissioner Zhang mentioned the Beltline protests and the work that was happening in Calgary in 2021 and 2022, and in probably into 2023, and we captured costs for those protests because they were incremental to, to our work that was, to the work that was happening within CPS. So it's not necessarily meant to stigmatize or politicize the item. It's more that it is a, it was a major policing event, and therefore, it's, to complete the report, it requires a cost analysis. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Campbell is also Chair of the Finance Committee. Commissioner Wong?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Campbell got partway to the question I was going to ask, so thank you for that. My, my general concern is, is not so much concerned, but actually in favor. We are going to probably witness more and more protests as we go through, you know, whether it be local, globalized sort of events. This is going to be taxing to your, your organization, your resources, your budget, and especially if it comes forward in future budget asks. I'm sure, you know, as Counselor, we're going to be asking the question, why is it, if this is one line item that justifies why you may be asking for a budget increase, it might be, might be appropriate to have it. Having said that, though, I agree that we shouldn't be segregated to this particular event. It should just indicate as a global trend, you are seeing over the years, the number of protests, the number of activations of resources, best the cost is as a future indicator. Thank you.
Okay, so I know we have used that, and we have got protest dollars in the budget, and so we've done that in past years to explain certainly Beltline and things like that, so past budgets. So that's, that's happened. So my question then is, is this demarcated as a major policing event? And if that's the case, then I think the motion would be amended to say that we want the cost because it's being deemed as a major policing event, and that's a requirement under our processes.
Chair, just to clarify, I did not deem this a major policing event. Just, just to be clear, I think that was a discussion at the, at the ARAC committee meeting, where I think that's sort of how it got here. But it was obviously something that we knew was a possibility, but it was never deemed as that. Now, I think that, I haven't read the policy, but I think the commission can do that. But just to be clear, it's not been deemed a major policing event, at least not by me.
Okay. So I don't want to amend the motion then, because that's not technically, and I would just say that from my perspective, something like the WPC, which takes years planning, or stampedes or whatever, those are mega events. those are mega events that you plan for years in advance. These are individual things, and I think they're a different category. And I'm not sure that the dollars involved are as huge as planning a year ahead for an event. So we'll go back to the original motion and do a vote on that. Sorry, I'm getting, we need an advice. So I'm going to go to Commissioner Weis first.
Thanks. I'd prefer to see a year-to-date costing of all the protests. I look at what's happening around City Hall. That's got to be hitting your budget. And it should be year-to-date, not one. Because what happens if this one is not as expensive as something that we're not even requesting? So, but why have a breakout? Just say the motion is that they present a year-to-date protesting cost to the June CPC. It's clean, it's simple, and it's exactly what we want. Awesome.
All right. So the amendment to the motion on the table, I think, and I'm looking at Commissioner Campbell. So can we have the motion to read just cost year-to-date for protests as opposed to separating out this particular one?
Sure, because I'm just going to be a get-along gal tonight.
I guess my question is, is there something in all of this that we would need to do to deem this a major policing event?
My understanding is that the report came to commission under the policy of that. So the corollary for me is that then you require the budget to go with it. If it's not, I don't want to misspeak and deem it a major policing event. It's certainly not my call to make that. But if that's the policy that's generating the conversation, then the money needs to go with it.
So my understanding how this agenda item got generated was that we wanted feedback on the protest at U of C and the police action as opposed to having it deemed. And it just got, that label got attached to it. It wasn't a formal process to attach that label. So I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Spicer for clarification on that.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that the commission can deem this a major policing event in accordance with the policy. So I think you'd want to move to do that first. And if it is deemed by commission a major policing event, then you could deem this report, which was the request, that it come under that policy. So that would link the two together. And then you could move forward with a budget piece.
So then we need to go back a step. And the new motion to go first is, does the commission wish to deem this situation, May 9th, a major policing event?
Would you like me to make that motion?
Sure.
Sure, I'm happy to make that motion. And I'll seek a second. Someone, someone?
We need a second or so that we can have a discussion and then vote.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Siddiqui, second. So I'll open it up for conversation. Commissioner Hope?
Thank you, Chair. For me, it'd just be, do we have any criteria of what we're using as commission? Because you gave a good explanation of what a major policing event looks like. So again, I don't want to set us precedence whereby we can, other commissions are forced into applying the same label later on.
So I don't know what the specific rules are in the criteria for a major event. I'm not that familiar with that policy. So I'm looking, Commissioner, Director O'Donnell?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. So just to clarify, in the policy, there are criteria for the police and the police chief to declare something a major policing event. And then at the end of that list, there's the catch-all of or anything the commission deems to be a major policing event. And so there is no criteria that has to be met for you to say, we want the major policing policy to apply to this event. And so it does not set a precedent to deem this a major policing event, nor is there a criteria you have to meet outside of deeming it so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to let the motion stand as is. Does commission wish to deem the May 9th University of Calgary protest and the resolution of it as a major policing event? And I need a show of hands for those in favor? One? I don't see any others. And I will ask for a show of hands for those against. One, two, three, four, five. And so the motion is defeated? So we have one in favor and 11 against. So the motion is defeated. And so do we want the second motion that was to bring forward a cumulative year-to-date dollar amount for protests? And?
I'm fine with that modification. Second, you were fine. Commissioner Tangay?
And Commissioner Zhang, second. So can I see, or any discussion on this now? We'll get it, one second to get it modified. Okay, all right. So motion has been moved and seconded to provide update at June 24 meeting, the cumulative cost of protests year-to-date. Commissioner Wong?
I think this is going in the right direction. I'm just wanting to, June 24, you know, if we asked June 24, six months into the year, will we be asking this again towards the end of the year? Or would we want to be a little more strategic as to, you know, when you want to actually get the amount?
So the question on the table is, do you want a six-month update? Or do we want an update as of now? Commissioner Sidd?
I think we should get a six-month update. Because you've already said that there's been 143 to date. So I think it's numbers that we should start looking at now, and then maybe again in six months. That's my preference.
So year-to-date would bring us to five months at this point?
Five months, yeah, five months.
All right. So we will leave it as a year-to-date total to come forward in June. And, sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Tangay?
All good. Being online, we're isolated a bit. But anyways, I just, you know, if we're going to actually get how much we've spent, it means nothing if we don't understand how much we've spent in the past. Are we above where we would expect it? Are we below what we would have expected? You know, it's a number. And what does the number tell us if we're not actually looking at what the past looked like? So if we're going to do it, I want to know where we were over the last five years, year after year, and where we would be leading to today.
We have some of the historic data, so that can be included in the evaluation. So thanks, yeah, that's a good point.
I would just add that into the amendment. Yes, I want year-to-date, and I want it to be compared to past five years.
Okay, so, yeah. All right, so we have moved and seconded year-to-date and comparison to previous years. Okay. All right, we have a mover and seconder, which is Commissioner Campbell and Tangay. Can I see a? Sorry, Tsang. Okay. And can I see a show of hands for those in favor for this motion? And any against? Nope, that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, and thank you to the chief for this first report. I'm just going to comment that we have a number of other reports to come forward in public session. And I'll just share what they are. The artificial intelligence update, PSS annual report, an overview of access and privacy processing timelines, and the crime update that is normal. So we still have four more significant reports to go. And so I will ask that the materials have been provided for the majority of those. And so we'll just move on to the next ones. So the next one is the artificial intelligence. So I'll turn that back over to the service.
Thanks, Chair, I'll take it from here. Thanks, good evening, commissioners. Thanks very much for the opportunity to be here. We've had several conversations over the last while about artificial intelligence. So we put together a brief presentation from Executive Director Brent Dyer, who, as you know, oversees our information technology, infrastructure, and Fleet Division. So Brent's super excited to be here. I will turn it over to him. Thanks, Brent.
That would not be a good idea. Just like throwing stuff at the police.
There we go. Okay, perfect.
And I will just comment that we do have the presentation, so most commissioners will have read that as well.
Thank you. So I promise I'm going to keep to 10 minutes. I'm going to go through the slides really, really quickly to allow for some conversation at the end. This is the IACP magazine, Police Chief Magazine. This is the front page. It's about AI. This is an important topic for policing all over the world. I think it's important for a couple of reasons. I think, number one, it creates a number of opportunities for policing to improve our services and to improve public safety and to build capacity and to build efficiencies. On the other side of it, police are acutely aware that AI comes with some risks. And so how is a police agency, do you sort of navigate this world? This is brand-new. This is very transformational technology. It's unlike others. And Calgary Police have put together a bit of a strategy that I'd like to share with you today really quickly, and I'll be happy to take some questions. Next slide, please. All right, so I briefly touched on the positive sides of AI. Build capacity. There's all kinds of use cases in policing that we feel that are going to transform the way that we do business, particularly on the inside of the organization. I'm not going to go through everything here, but we've seen the advance of the GPTs, so that ChatGPT, GPT world. We want to bring that inside the organization and manage that responsibly to allow people to be more productive and things like that. So I'm not going to go into much detail here about this. Let's go on to the next slide. All right, the risks around AI. So there's a tremendous number of risks here for policing in general. And I'll talk about it in the next slide here. But generally, on this slide, what I wanted to highlight is that we understand that with artificial intelligence, you amplify good decisions, but you also amplify bad decision-making. So it really comes down to data. And if you talk to data scientists, if you talk to anybody in the AI space, they will tell you that if you don't have good data to start with, it's very difficult to roll out an AI platform to take full advantage of it. Next slide, please. I'm going to slow down on this slide a little bit. So the Calgary Police, we've broken AI down into three distinct categories. It's quite a large space. AI covers a lot of ground. And for policing, it creates some very unique challenges. So I'll talk about the top portion here. Police have to respond to AI-inspired crimes. So what we mean here is we see that the threat environment for citizens, the use of AI in frauds, we don't expect that to go away. We expect that to start accelerating a little bit, right? The other thing that AI does is it amplifies and it accelerates criminals' ability to exploit on a mass scale. So mass-scale exploits. As policing agencies, this is new for us. And we feel that we're going to have some challenges with court. We're going to have some capacity issues inside the organization to respond to a lot of these things. So this is a new world for us. And we're tracking this. So Deputy Cook's Bureau is all over this. We are working nationally with the CACP to come up with national strategies around, well, how are we going to respond and provide services around these types of crimes? The bottom left, I call it business support. We feel that this is a safe area. So this is where we can use AI for the good, and it's got very low risk associated with it. So this is, a good example of this might be where we use AI to find the blue Chevy in the video, right? So this video processing piece, where we can go in and have the technology go through hours and hours of video rather than having a human do it. Perhaps FOIP requests, perhaps speed up the legal process for us, perhaps help us write documents better, help us manage emails better, help us find things in our environment, find things and summarize those things. These are the things. These are the productivity things that we feel is a very safe way to sort of enter this market for policing. So we've got that side of it. Now, the last side is this predictive policing. Now, we've heard this, and I talked about the amplification of bad decisions. Until we get our data nailed down in the policing community, this is very, very, very hard to apply. The other side of this is our IT suppliers in the policing world haven't matured enough, in our opinion, to actually start delivering this type of thing. And I've got some strategies that we've put into policy and guidelines that will help us kind of monitor this and work through this so that as the market changes, we can look at this. But for now, for now, the Calgary Police, we're not interested in this third bubble on the right, lower right. It's just too risky for us right now to get into that world. Next slide, please. So this is our current state. We're very early on in the game for AI. So we're doing a lot of industry research and trending, benchmarking. The definitions around AI, there's all types of different types of AI. There's machine learning, there's generative AI, there's all these different things. And we're quite early on in training our staff and training our folks and getting them to understand the language around it. We don't allow AI currently on our network, right? Like the generative ChatGPT, we block that from our network right now. I know, I know. So we do have a few systems where we use machine learning. And I wouldn't call this the type of AI that you see in the media today. Machine learning's been around for a couple decades now for different industries. So, but we do use it. We have facial recognition, some of our analytical systems. Interestingly enough, we use it for our firewalls, for example, something like that. So rather than having a human there, we use technology in our firewalls to block threats so that we don't have to have humans do that. And it gets very good at understanding what a threat is and what it isn't. So we're using machine learning already, but we're not into that generative sort of different space where you have AI that learns and makes decisions about things. Mentioned the Technology Ethics Committee. I'll go on to that in a little bit. And just a note here that our vendors right now are all preparing for this. So in the IT supply space, all of the vendors, I predict that within three years, when they give you the next upgrade or when they give you the next piece of software, it's going to have some type of AI in it. And so we're very, very aware of that. We're very, very careful. So we've added it to our tender process to ask specifically what's coming. Next slide, please. Briefly, this is where we are. So we've done a lot of work around writing some policy around AI. So we've yet to put that into our policy committee, but that's happening next. We've developed a set of guidelines. We're planning a member communication rollout just to let people know what's going on in and around the world of AI. Today, we're talking to you folks to let you know what we're doing in this space. And the last slide here, we're very, very actively involved nationally and internationally in the policing communities around how to advance this safely and responsibly. So I will say that in Alberta, Calgary and Edmonton by far are probably leading the country in terms of AI advancement in policing and that responsible look. So, next slide, please. Our first project, we want to introduce Microsoft Copilot. So if you will, this is ChatGPT for inside your safe network, right? So we are looking to do this. We hope to do this within the next couple of months. It's all part of our existing contract. But this will be our first entry into the generative world for our folks, right? So getting to use the technology a little bit. Auditing and governance is going to be really important for this. We understand that the successful implementation of any AI technology is going to... of any A I technology is going to involve really good governance and really good monitoring and really good measurements. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Next slide, please. Okay, I spoke about the number one, the guidelines. So these are our principles. And I'll briefly go through these because I think it's really important. So with A I, we're not changing anything that we already have with compliance policies and legislation. We're not touching it. So A I is just a tool that we are going to use, but we are still going to be compliant with, with those issues. A I has to be purposeful. It needs to be associated with a project or it needs to be associated with a business outcome. Very, very important. Protecting sensitive information, this doesn't, this doesn't stop. We have a policy, we have a line in the policy that says, do not put secret or classified C information into a public generative A I engine. It's really as simple as that. So it very much follows our own existing I T policy. Upholding public trust, all of our decisions around the technology, this is going to be a main focus for us. Everything is monitored on our, on our network. So we'll be able to monitor and track how A I is being used in our organization. Verification and attribution. So verifying that, that we're using A I in a, in a responsible way. And this is probably the, one of the most important ones. A I is an aid, not a substitute. We really do feel that humans are the most important thing in the investigative process. I don't see that changing ever. We're not replacing humans with technology in the investigative space. Investigate, good investigations always have humans in the loop. And our policies and procedures will always reflect that. And finally, privacy and legal compliance. There's, there's really nothing that's going to change. We will not change any of those things. We will still be very, very acutely aware and sensitive about privacy and, and the legal access to information. So for example, if you are, if you're not an investigator, you might not be allowed to use investigative data, regardless of whether or not you have access to an A I tool. Those permissions will always stay in place. Next slide, please. And finally, what we've done here in Calgary is something very unique across the country. We're the only agency in Canada that has a Technology Ethics Steering Committee. This is not just about A I, but the A I conversation is a very important one. This is a, a group of individuals. So inside, we have eight individuals inside the organization and seven from outside. So this is the public. And if we go on to the next slide, we can talk about the composition while I talk a little bit about the purpose. The purpose of the committee is really to, to open up dialogue with the community about how we're using technology in, 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 within our service. Highly successful. From the external side, we've got some incredible talent on this committee that, that offer a whole lot of time for the, to the Calgary Police Service. Just briefly, a data science law professor from the University of Calgary that studies technology ethics. So these are the types of folks that we're, we're tapping into. One of the challenges for police agencies across Canada is we don't have competency yet around this. So one of our recommendations is the Calgary Police Service nationally is, is start talking to your communities about how you're using technology. They will come forward and they will help you guide and, and use the technology. So for example, our policy, we are going to run that by this committee, and we will get comments. Before we roll out any A I technology, we will discuss them with this, this body here and, and, and get the concerns and the feedback and the suggestions. Next slide, please. And these are the, some of the things that we're currently working on in conjunction with our technology ethics. And I've talked about most of these, so I won't slow down and go through these. But essentially, ultimately, we're working on a technology code of ethics, the assessment framework. So this is the measurement. So how do we actually go and measure this new stuff that's coming in? It can be quite complex and broad. So we, we need some help on how to learn how to measure, how to monitor it, is the same sort of issues. And then finally, the, the technology ethics policy. So the A I policy is, it's in final draft, and we should have that ratified here pretty shortly. Next slide, please. There you go.
Thank you. That was awesome.
Think I'm on time.
Well, actually, sorry, I was, I was targeted for having said this, but that was just about 20 minutes. So that's good. But that's fine. That's a lot of information there, and we need to know that. So we appreciate it. And we may have to reconsider the 10 minute time limit again in the future. So I totally acknowledge that. And I appreciate the information because we do need to know about this. So I have Counselor Wong, I have, sorry, Commissioner Wong, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Tsong.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dyer, thanks for your presentation. I think we are at the baby stages. It's probably the best way to put it. Baby stages of A I. And, and you're talking a lot about how A I could be used within the service. And again, in your three little concentric circles where you do, you don't necessarily want to get into. Where my question is not so much what we use or you use in the service, but how it's being used in the public and interface to CPS. Again, there are bad actors who use, you know, use A I to mimic people. Right? To misrepresent people. There are people who use A I for tools to, to misrepresent information that you, that they're brought into you. So reporting of incidences and things as such. Right? How, like, where are we at in ensuring that A I doesn't infiltrate the service and make you compromised?
Yeah, no, excellent, excellent question. So Deputy Cook's Bureau, working very closely with the folks there to investigate those, those sorts of things. So our, our network is, is probably one of the most secure networks that we, we have in the city here. We, we do a lot on auditing. And so from a threat actor perspective, that sort of penetration into our network, there's less concern there. It is a big concern. So those deep fakes is what you're referring to. And, and so the authentic, the, the authenticity of digital sort of inter, interactions, it's, it's going to be challenging. But I am, I am confident that, you know, with, with help from Deputy Cook's Bureau that we're able to cover that off and we're able to detect those things. There's some interesting things happening in the, in the, the digital authentication world too. So there's a lot of discussion about watermarking of videos and things like that so that, that they can be authenticated. So we are, we're working with that.
Okay, I, I'm thinking of situations where, as Member Council, for example, if I were to write a letter to the chief, how do you know it's actually me as opposed to a threat actor? How do you authenticate, you know, that? And for that matter, even service to service members, that's, that's where, you know, I guess my greatest concern comes from.
For sure. So it comes down to the, the good practice that you already probably do. So think of phishing, right? And when you get a, a strange email that doesn't come in from an, from a known domain, for example. So if it doesn't come from the city of Calgary, if it doesn't come, we are currently training our folks to kind of identify those, those types of emails that come in. The messaging is, is around, if there's any indication that there might be something weird about a phone call or, or a phone message, then, then bring those things forward. And, and we've had some great success with some phishing attempts that have tried to, you know, penetrate us, but we, we've caught them. And so that learning and that, that culture, that change of culture, I think, is, is evolving. And yeah, so we just have, we have to keep on top of it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for that. Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks very much, Mr. Dyer. I had four questions, and you managed to crush all of them in your presentation, so except for two. So I'm really proud of that. So facial recognition tools and the available tools to CPS right now, their error rates, and particularly their error rates with racialized individuals. So studies have shown that facial recognition technology is biased. The error rate for light-skinned men is approximately 1% compared to 35% for darker-skinned women. Calgary is 44% racialized, heading to 50% in about three years. So you can't tell me that I'm going to have a tool that is basically going to identify half the population half the time incorrectly.
Thanks, Commissioner. I can, I can speak about the technology that we use for facial recognition a little bit. So the, the technology that we use, it, it doesn't actually measure tone or color or anything like that. So it is really about the distance between the eyes, the distance and the relationship between the eyes and the ears and the nose and the chin. And there's an algorithm behind that. So the current technology that we use doesn't do that. Plus, we have a very robust process for facial recognition. Right? You don't just go and look up facial, do facial recognition. There needs to be a case number. There needs to be a validation after the facts. So the computer nearly just provides a suggestion that they might have found a match. And then the investigator then has to manually go in and do it. We know that facial recognition technology, at the very, very, very best, is 80%. And that's why we have those processes, processes in place.
Thanks very much. What missteps has CPS made already with A I tools? And what corrections are you contemplating?
So because we're not really using A I tools, it's difficult to answer, but I can answer it this way. So you might remember the ClearView A I. Right? So this was a wake-up call for a lot of police agencies. So this was the social media tool that you could load on your phone and you could put in photos. And what was happening is police officers were using it because it was rather effective most of the time, but not all of the time. Right? So this really raised the, the stakes on using these sorts of very advanced pieces of technology. And it's not just A I, it's anything. And so that's why this exists. This is why we do our Technology Ethics Committee. This is why we put some robust practices in, in and around selecting the technology to avoid the ClearView A Is.
Thanks very much, Mr. Dyer. Back to your chair.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that answer. Commissioner Tsong?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. My question is about Copilot. You mentioned that next few months will be turned on. So, but Copilot is not technically part of any of the license. It's a add-on, and Microsoft, Microsoft charts $480 per cent per year right now. If everyone in CPS has turned on, it's 1.5 million. So do you have a phase plan for that?
So there's, there's two sides to Microsoft Copilot. There's the, the free version or the non-licensed version, still within your network. And then there's the licensed version. So we have a rollout plan. We're not going to roll out the licensed version to everybody. We are creating personas and who might need that. It might be analysts, it might be. So we haven't crossed that bridge yet. But we do have budget for approximately about 100 licenses right now. Right? And, and we'll see how that goes. Right? Like, so we want to get it out and have people use it. And then we will see where it's saving. So along with the license, licenses that we will issue for Copilot, there's a going to be, there's going to be a measurement program around it too, to see what kind of efficiencies we're also seeing, what kind of capacity is being built. Because we need to justify that, those licenses. I feel that there is a huge opportunity to justify more licenses than what we're going to initially do. It's very powerful, powerful piece of software.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you very much for that question. And Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
Thanks. Got a couple of questions. One, given some of the statistics that we've heard about A I and facial recognition, do you, even in the current limited use that you have, are your officers that are using it understanding of its extreme limitations, especially with certain populations?
They do. And I'll clarify this. Officers don't use facial recognition. It's our facial recognition unit that actually does the initial analysis. There is simply a request from officers that, that they might have a photo from a Ring camera based on a break and enter. They bring those forward. Our facial recognition unit then does the analysis, provides maybe three or four photos. And then the officer then has to do some further investigation using other techniques to identify that individual. So part of our communication strategy in and around the use of A I does touch on this a little bit. So there are some perils to using the chat G P Ts and those sorts of things. So that's very much a part of the communications plan is to raise the awareness on the risks, the opportunities, where to get training, where to get your questions answered.
Thanks. And the only other, I would just have a comment on your Ethics Steering Committee. A lot of those are vested interest individuals. It may be worthwhile to consider a couple of public members who are that type of individual that may be negatively affected by that facial recognition and other A I tools. And there's lots of, of evidence out there that might point to which groups that should be, just a suggestion.
No, thank you. That is, that is a good selection. We're, we're looking at rotating some folks out so that we can see some fresh faces as, as time goes on. So excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much for that report and for the questions. I think they're very helpful. And I think this really takes our understanding up a notch so that we understand what's going on. Look forward to whenever you come back. Thank you so much. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the P S S Annual Report. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the service.
Thanks. And I'll just flip it to Executive Director Catherine Murphy for the next two items, actually, 5.3 and 5.4.
And I should state, so P S S is the Professional Standards Section. And so this report is the annual report from that group. And it's a group that reports on police conduct complaints and investigations, among other things. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We can pull up the PowerPoint presentation. For those who don't know me, my name's Catherine Murphy. I'm the Executive Director of Legal and Regulatory Services. So that includes professional standards. It includes legal services, and it includes access and privacy. I'm very pleased to present the 2023 Professional Standards Annual Report. This report really reflects how CPS is accountable to the community that we serve. We spent 2023 taking a very hard look at how we can provide better service to Calgarians. You'll see a suite of things that we've done to improve efficiency, transparency and accessibility in our police accountability process. We've also been very much focused on leadership, on learning and on member wellness, which we all realize are essential elements to preventing misconduct from happening in the first place. We know that as a police service, we not only need to be accountable to the community, but we need the community to trust the process by which we hold ourselves accountable. the process by which we hold ourselves accountable. And that really is our focus in professional standards. Next slide, please. So very quickly, the PSS mandate really falls under the Police Act and the Police Service Regulations, which is the legislation that governs police accountability in the province of Alberta. We take in concerns and complaints. We also look at policies and services of CPS. We take in compliments about officers. We do engagement, communication, and reporting. Next slide. So this slide displays the number of citizen contacts and external and internal complaints that we dealt with last year. A citizen contact could be anyone who registers a concern with professional standards, could be a telephone call, email, or through our public portal. The numbers last year were around eight hundred and seventy nine, which is a very steady, very consistent with the five year average. External complaints, however, which are formal complaints, written complaints of misconduct under the Police Act, are down twelve percent year over year. And I would say that that number does not take into account population growth. So when you factor that in, it's actually down a higher amount than twelve percent. Internal complaints are when the chief orders an investigation based on conduct that he sees, and that's concerning to him. Those are also down about twenty three percent compared to the five year average. However, it's really remained steady since 2021 approximately. So for each public contact we receive, we capture the overall substance of the concern to identify trends in behavior or conduct. And as you can see from this slide, those are the top two trends, lack of service or rude or unprofessional behavior. And that is generally consistent with the year over year trend. We see some switching between those two categories, but in general, those are typically the top ones that we see. Next slide, please. Turning to investigative timelines, Professional Standards has made exceptional gains in investigative efficiency. Last year, seventy percent of our files were closed within twelve months, which is a significant improvement over 2022, where it sat at fifty three percent. And 2021 was only thirty five percent. How did we do it? We did it through a suite of efficiency measures that we've put in place. Body worn camera has been exceptionally useful in this regard. We use body worn camera to resolve more than half of our external complaints, and we know that it takes significantly less time to resolve a complaint that has body worn camera as compared to those that don't by about a three month difference. And that's really because it's evidence we can rely on. It's objective. It's neutral. And Professional Standards can rely on that to expedite the the disposition of our files. Next slide, please. This slide displays complaint outcomes. So 2023 overall did see an increased percentage of formal allegations of misconduct sustained against CPS members. This is on an allegation by allegation basis. So it's important to note that complaints often contain multiple allegations of misconduct. So for example, you can see here that at a disciplinary hearing, fifty one percent of allegations were sustained. But I can tell you that seventy five percent of officers that went to a disciplinary hearing receives some form of discipline. So it just may not have been on all allegations, but at least one allegation was sustained in seventy five percent of cases that went to disciplinary hearings. Next slide, please. So in 2020, twenty twenty three, the most common allegation that was sustained against CPS members is insubordination. This is again consistent year over year. Insubordination basically means non compliance to CPS policy. And we have many policies. So it could be any policy we're talking about here. The second most common is discreditable conduct, which is in general, conduct that reflects poorly on the reputation of the police service. We're asked frequently about use of force complaints. Those make up about five percent of sustained misconduct allegations against CPS members. Next slide. So this slide reflects discipline. So what happens essentially when misconduct allegations are sustained against CPS members? There's a distinction in the Police Act between complaints of a serious nature and complaints that are not of a serious nature. And those are defined terms in the legislation. We recognize that most people who file complaints about police conduct, the complaint is serious to them. So when I use that word, I mean it in the context of the legislation specifically. All complaints that are deemed to be serious go to a disciplinary hearing if there's a reasonable prospect of of a conviction of the misconduct. For matters that go to hearing, the most common penalty, as you can see, is forfeiture of overtime hours. So officers will work up a bank of overtime hours, and we withdraw money from that bank as part of their penalty. The next most common is a reduction in rank. Those might be temporary, or they might be permanent. And then the third is a suspension without pay. That's where they have to actually go off work for a certain amount of time, which can be up to eighty hours of time. For complaints that do not go to hearing, the most common form of of discipline is an official warning. Next slide, please. So it highlights from 2023. I've already talked about the reduction of timelines. It's very important for us to be efficient. This affects complainants, and it affects CPS members. Equally, there's, you know, accountability requires timeliness. And so we work towards that. It's a priority of ours, and it will remain a priority. We've also really leaned into technology last year. So we launched a new public complaints portal so that both complementers and complainers can file easily through the online portal. We are currently in the process of translating that portal into multiple languages. So you'll see that roll out this year. We have launched new learning for our members and their supervisors. We've put in place a new member liaison position, which is basically process support to help our employees navigate the system. And we've released a discipline matrix, which gives our members predictability on the types of penalties they might be subject to if the misconduct is sustained and kind of keeps us consistent. And then last but certainly not least, we ran a public survey late last year, which we're still analyzing of three years of complementers and complainants. And we were looking for feedback from Calgarians on how they experienced the Professional Standards process. Not necessarily the outcome, because those decisions are made independently, but we want to know if people can find the information, if they understand the process, if they understand the outcome, and if they feel respected by CPS and by Professional Standards. Next slide, please. So we continue to assess the feedback, and we're already halfway through 2024. So we are implementing a number of additional initiatives based on feedback we've received. Those include electronic regular updates to complainants on the status of their files, including improving readability of our communications. They're quite legalistic. So we are improving the understanding around why complaints were decided one way or the other. We're looking at capturing demographic information so that we know who we're working with. Much of the Professional Standards process is done in writing. So it's important that we understand that our process and we have a focus on on inclusion as we work through our process with the community. We're also launching a dashboard for leaders so that they can engage in early intervention with their employees. So they can see on a holistic basis the employees under their command, things like use of force stats, how many traumatic incidents have they been exposed to? Have they received compliments? Have they received complaints? This allows leaders to look at trends with their employees and get involved earlier to prevent a situation from potentially escalating. And certainly, last but not least, we are very much engaged in readiness for Police Act reform. The province has passed legislation that will see a new Police Review Commission implemented over the coming couple of years. We're very engaged with the Government of Alberta in preparing for that transition as we start to move over a thousand concerns a year to the new body as it be begins to be stood up. Next slide, please. So I just want to take one minute to talk about compliments. We talk mostly about complaints, but we do receive hundreds of compliments. And you can actually take the PowerPoint down, Amber. I receive hundreds of them every year. And we talk a lot about kind of trust and confidence at this table and what what inspires it with Calgarians. And I can tell you that sort of through the words of the compliments we receive, I can, I can tell you certainly what inspires it. And it it's not, it's not heroics. It's the small things. So the things that people write to us about are things like retrieving someone's glasses from the scene of an accident and returning it to them, or waiting on the side of Deerfoot Trail in the dark for a tow truck, finding a lost relative, or even delivering a death notification with compassion. It's empathy, basically, and connection is what drives trust and confidence and the compliments that we see. Policing is a very human job, and our members are human too. And I think that while it's critically important that we hold our members accountable when things don't go as they're supposed to, it's equally important that we give them credit when it does. So I just want to read you one compliment. It's short. But it's from, just to give you a sense of what I'm talking about, this is from a woman and with her permission. It was a compliment she sent in to Constable Ali. It's male in District Eight. And I'll just read it. "To the officer who changed my life. My belly button birthday is in nineteen seventy eight. My sober date birthday is in twenty twenty two. I'd like to express my absolute gratitude to you for the day that you arrested me. I'm grateful beyond words. My entire life changed that day. I remember being in the back of your car and I hurt myself. I was thinking my life was over and I was so wrong. In fact, my life had just turned around for the absolute best. I know that you're young and you must have a lot to deal with. I apologize for the stress that you must endure on the job. Please know that what you're doing has made a difference in my life more than imaginable now that I am sober. I've found a new life. So when I say thank you here, now, it is with my entire heart and being. My family thanks you as well as all of those who are trying to make a difference in the lives of others. Part of my experience with you made all the difference. I wanted to make sure that you received this letter, as hopefully you can see how much of a difference you're making in the community and in people's lives. May God bless you and your family, as well as all of the frontline workers who put their lives on the line to save others like me from their own destruction, as well as protecting those who are at risk in the community. These may only be mere words. However, this was the only means by which I could reach out to you. I hope you do receive this and know that with this, I'm sending you the biggest hug." So I just want to congratulate this wonderful lady. When she wrote that letter, she was four hundred and eighty eight days sober. And I would just say thank you to the Calgarians who send their compliments in. It makes a very big difference in the morale of our members and in their feeling of connection to the community and in their commitment to continue with the work that they do. So I'll stop there for questions.
Thank you very much. That was very good, very helpful. Commissioner Siddiqui, please.
Thanks for that. And thank you for sharing the compliments as well, because sometimes we don't get to hear those. So thank you for that. I had a question, though, around, sorry, I have to lift up my computer again, around the external and internal complaints. And the external complaints, the majority are around rude and unprofessional behavior and lack of service. And I'm just wondering how you're taking these these findings and comments and then translating it into annual training and sort of incorporating this into improvements with the officers.
We're actually doing a little bit of work this year to refine how we capture categories. They're quite broad right now. Like, there's a lot of things that could fall into those categories. So we're actually putting some additional flags on things so we can start to get down into the detail a little bit more. But we do give monthly updates to members on the internet so that they can see the trends as well. But it's, it's an area of focus for us in terms of communicating and driving down to what does that mean, right?
So I guess, once you find that data, how will you then incorporate that into training? Is there, you know, is there a plan to do that so that you can make the, I guess, change the numbers and decrease them?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, our updates and when we share information is one of the highest read pieces of information internally at CPS. Members are very interested in the trends that we see in complaints and in in disciplinary outcomes. So we have a very high readership of those updates. But absolutely, like, we can consider working with the CCLC to look at learning options and incorporating that more directly. I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nissen Jordan, and then Commissioner Campbell, and Commissioner Tangi.
Thanks, E D Murphy. This, just wanted to say that the amount of the turnaround that PSS, the Professional Standards, has done in the last couple of years has been phenomenal. And I just wanted to congratulate the service. I do have a question. And it's perhaps more for the the public understanding is when somebody hears that, yeah, we're the the complaints are are sustained through the hearing process, and that the majority of them result in official warning and some loss of, you know, some of their overtime. To the public, that comes across as really not significant discipline. Can you just identify where that matrix comes? Is it, you know, basically from case law? Is it definition of from history? Like, why is that? And why do you consider an official warning such a, you know, a significant discipline, whereas most of the general public wouldn't do that?
Right. We we actually don't consider an official warning significant discipline. It's a warning, just as it's titled. And often, when we consider levying a disciplinary penalty against an officer, there are a number of mitigating and aggravating considerations that we go through. And that is set out in the case law. But the maximum amount of penalty in terms of hours is in the legislation. So we're somewhat constrained. And I would just say that it may not always sound like a lot. But a forfeiture of forty hours is, and these are overtime hours, so it's a higher rate, actually, is a week's pay. So we're taught, like, it can easily get up into the thousands of dollars, which is a fairly significant sum. And we've actually started to be more transparent about that, because I don't, I think you're right. I don't think it's well understood. So in our hearings, you'll start to see our our presiding officers will say, and that equates to X dollars. So just to bring more transparency around what that actually means. So it is something that's felt, and it can be quite material for the members.
And just to follow up on that, is, is there any attempt to look at modernization of those penalties? And I'm gonna kind of point out that, you know, there are some sexual assault allegations with many professions that result in loss, you know, significant loss of ability to to function as a physician or a nurse or anything like that. So is there any further work being done on some of the penalties around that?
Absolutely. We have an excellent opportunity right now. The province is working on new police service regulations that will fall under the Police Act and are necessary to implement the new Police Review Commission. We're very active in that process. And in fact, we have suggested some changes related to allegations of sexual misconduct. We've suggested a standalone ground of misconduct related to that to bring more, to bring the regulations more in line with what societal expectations are in in 2024. So absolutely.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much. My question is actually along a similar line as Commissioner Nissen Jordan. So under the penalties for sustained allegations on page twenty two and twenty four, twenty two and twenty three of forty four of your report, or I think on page eight of your presentation, only four percent of penalties relate to a dismissal from the service. That aligns with years of reporting across Canada that indicates that police are rarely dismissed for misconduct. Here in Calgary, we have folks helping an officer who was dismissed to overturn what some in the judiciary are, have already called a lenient conviction for assault causing bodily harm. Thinking in terms of the Police Service Regulation and other opportunities, what does this commission need to do in terms of advocacy, policy intervention, or just simple change to ensure that there are serious consequences for police who commit serious transgressions?
Well, the four percent, you're not wrong. It is very difficult to terminate a police officer, and that's justified in many circumstances. We put police officers in situations where, and I'm talking about situations where they're lawfully placed to begin with, right? So it's a tough job. And while there needs to be accountability, there also needs to be heavily, heavy scrutiny before we jump to conclusions about the outcome. So the objective investigation and the objective hearing of serious matters is very important in the process. That said, as I mentioned, there is an opportunity right now to modernize this framework to bring it in line with what Calgarians would expect of their police service. So that is sort of the path of the case law to date. But as I mentioned, we're very engaged in looking at the policy around this.
Can I just add one thing, Chair, in relation to that? And Catherine, just on the four percent, that what that doesn't reflect, though, is officers who committed significant misconduct who resigned ahead of time. So those are the ones that go through the disciplinary hearing process where there's an actual finding of dismissal. But there are others that actually resign ahead of time and never go through that process because of a loss of jurisdiction. So the four percent's not a number that's probably fully reflective of of the whole.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chief. I think I'm still back where we have an officer who was dismissed for, with a criminal charge for assault causing bodily harm. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I hold a professional license in this province. I don't get to work at all with a criminal charge. Not at all. And we have folks helping, trying to help that officer overturn what was already considered to be a lenient conviction. That doesn't sit well with me as a Calgarian, and I suspect it doesn't sit well with the majority of Calgarians and Canadians. We need to be thinking about how to modernize those processes such that they reflect our understanding and our relationships in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tangi.
I'll try to be brief. I think it's important, and and of course, the Chair of the COC had had mentioned this, that, you know, as we're modernizing and moving forward, that we also start looking at other areas that we may see complaints that may fit into HR complaints and grievances. And so I know this is happening, but I think it's important as we're in public that we are moving forward to have this in one way or another reported. My my concerns, and and this will be the question, is the internal complaints, and it fits under the chief, and this isn't in any way a shot at the the chief or to you, Chief Newfeld, it would be any chief, is that there's ultimate authority to determine whether or not there's an investigation, which means we don't an investigation, which means we don't have a denominator here. So although the numbers are down, we have no idea how many were brought towards, or how many people wanted, or maybe that there should have been, as it's the discretion of a single individual. I'm wondering how we try to figure out what that denominator looks like, and would that fit into things like grievances or HR complaints?
So just to clarify, any person can make an external complaint to Professional Standards, even if they're an employee of the service, so they don't have to go through the chief. Often, they don't want to be the complainant, if they're an internal, for various reasons. So that sometimes the chief will order the investigation and effectively be the complainant, but it is open, open to people to access the system if they wish. Another area that we've been quite vocal about around change is modernizing the accountability process to be more in line with HR best practices. So the police complaints process works quite well and is designed for interactions between police and the public in the course of exercising their duties. It wasn't built, as much so, for internal complaints between employees, and it's not built for the kind of culture change that we are trying to advance in our organization. So that there are things that we can do around, for example, confidentiality, to make sure that our processes, particularly internally, are psychologically safe for people and are also in line with occupational health and safety legislation and with our sort of collective bargaining environment and labor relations environment. So we have a lot of different legislative regimes at play. It's very complicated in a police workplace, but we're doing our best to think outside the box in terms of our processes. And where we are constrained by legislation, we're advocating for change, and we're doing that actively right now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I do believe that is the case and that we are moving forward in the appropriate manners. And I look forward with, you know, all of the recent media and so forth on, on kind of the systemic changes that we're trying to do, how we can report that to the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions, and thank you for that presentation. Very good discussion. I appreciate that. We'll move on now to report number 5.4 out of 5.5, the overview of access and privacy proposal with respect to timeline. So I'll continue with.
Thank you, Chair. So this report is in response to a request made by the commission in February for more information on where we are at with processing FOIP requests, access and privacy requests. I'll be fairly brief. I know we're short on time and just take some questions. So the access and privacy section falls within the Legal and Regulatory Services Division. It has 13 full-time equivalent employees, and I've listed them in the memo here. There's one director, there's intake, administration, and disclosure analysts. We have, thankfully, received three incremental positions, so that includes the three, over various, through various different funding mechanisms over the last couple of years. I'll speak a bit more about this, but we currently have four, four out of 13 positions are vacant, although we've just finalized the hiring process for three of those four. So we're making progress. The total number of FOIP requests we received in 2023 was 4,100. We are on track. So that's 4,100 requests divided amongst, really, eight disclosure analysts. So you, as you can imagine, that's a significant volume of work. We are on track to exceed that this year with already more than 1,400 requests as of the date of this memo. That's up about 17% from 2020. We have, in terms of delays, and we recognize there are delays, we have 76 requests that are outstanding from 2023. So that's 2% of all requests. I realize there's 76 people behind those requests waiting for their answers, but percentage-wise, we're working very hard to keep on top of the numbers. I've outlined a couple of reasons for the delays. I've mentioned volume. We also had a major switch in our IT system. The province took online, offline their former FOIPnet system, so we had to, with the assistance of Brent's team, build our own. And the transition of all of these files while in flight has, of course, with any IT change, resulted in some delays, although overall, it's going fairly well. Technology as well, video, right? So we've seen an increasing proportion of video. Many access requests now have video associated, whether it's body worn camera, ICDV, or audio video. So the skills to redact video are very different than the skills to redact paper. So building up that expertise and processing those records has been a significant resource draw for us. Mental health and wellness is the second issue. Our access and privacy analysts, as you can imagine, are looking at police files all day, and they have to look at them carefully because they're looking for information they might have to redact. So there's, they don't skim things. They review them in depth. This includes homicides, collisions, child abuse, domestic situations. So we have had mental health leaves. Thankfully, we have, we have a healthy team now. They're not afflicting us now when we pay a lot of attention to this, but because of the training window, which I'll talk about, it takes a long time to recover when you have unanticipated leaves. Because of what I just said, they're dealing with extremely sensitive information. They have access to everything in the Calgary Police Service, including victim information, confidential informant information. So it's obviously important. They're careful and well-trained. This is not an entry-level privacy position, and it takes, even for people with experience, it takes up to two years to train and have them operating fully independently. That will, that will not change. It's just critically important that we can manage that risk, but it's just something that factors into our ability to become fully staffed again. The delays that we're experiencing have increased slowly since 2021, mostly due to a series of unexpected leaves for various reasons, whether they were medical retirements, taking new opportunities. It's just unfortunately been some unexpected leaves over the last few years that we're dealing with. So currently, we have four fully trained analysts, four partially trained analysts, and three vacant analysts. As I mentioned, we've just staffed those three vacant positions. So we'll be, the only vacancy remaining is our administrative assistant. So that will be staffed shortly. We do watch the overtime. The answer to this is not unlimited overtime, because what happens is we burn people out and exacerbate potential mental health risks. People need to have a break, so we watch that really carefully. And of course, we are monitoring Brent's work in the world of machine learning and automation and AI, and it is my dream that one day, we are not there yet, that some of the work in terms of searching for records and at least initial redactions can be, there may be some tools or efficiencies in future. We do know that a lot of our vendors, for example, Axon and BodyWorn is looking at things like this, but they're not quite ready for, for consumption yet by us. So I'll just take questions.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's people and time. It's a hard, hard resource to manage and find. So thank you very much. Are there any questions? I've got Commissioner Neeson-Jordan.
Thanks, Edie Murphy. I know through other experience that often the request at the front end is, requires significant work to actually narrow down what area they want to go to or have the information from. Do you have sufficient resources on that front end to get it down to the essence of what they should and do want?
Well, if you ask me, I will never say we have sufficient resources. I do believe, though, that if, when, if we are able to have a fully operational unit with 13 people, we should be able to handle our current volume. I am optimistic about that. It's just managing this over time and, and getting out of the deficit that we have been in. We do work with applicants to try to narrow their request to what they want, but at the end of the day, it's their right to ask for the scope that they want to ask for. So if they decide on a scope and don't want to change it, then we roll with it.
Yeah, that's, that is a big problem, without a doubt. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, okay, we'll move on. Oh, sorry, you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
Sorry. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, Ms. Murphy. I just wanted to compliment you on the, on recognizing probably the one opportunity we have for some really good, for some really good work in AI, in that we could use an AI tool eventually for conducting FOIP and PIPA and HIA searches to speed up the processing. And we can look at training those tools to review body worn camera and other digital media photographs, CCTV footage, social media, to reduce the mental health and strain for those analysts and access folks. So there's the moment where technology comes in and can improve our lives. Thanks.
Thank you for that, and thank you for all of the work that you do, both in PSS and all the other pieces that you have in your portfolio. It's a lot of work and a lot of attention and care that needs to be done. It's all behind the scenes, but it's critically important. So thank you very much for all of that. And with that, we'll move on to item 5.4. These, sorry, 5.5, the crime update. So there's two of these, Bureau of Community Policing and the Bureau of Investigative Support. I will comment that all of the materials have been provided to commission in advance and are available, so we don't need to go too far into an explanation or reiteration of all that. And so I'll turn it back over to the service. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Just for the crime updates, I'll go firstly to Acting Deputy Chief O'Brien, and then directly afterwards to Deputy Chief Cook.
Thanks, Chief. So I'll refer the commission to the March and April crime snaps, sorry, snapshots for any, for the crime trends, as well as the notable events that we had over March and April. This month, what I'd like to do, if I could, is just take a few minutes just to highlight some of the great work that's gone on with a new team, or new teams that we rolled out at the beginning of April. That's our community engagement response teams, or what we refer to as CERT. And that's as a result of the 50 positions that we were given by the province in late 2023. Half of the funding we received in the first quarter of this year, and we use this funding to deploy the first set of CERTs. We now have CERTs in District 1, 2, or sorry, District 1, 4, 5, and 6. And though I will note that the CERT team in, in District 4 is actually funded by, by us. That one isn't provincial funding right now. We're in the process of securing funding for the remaining 25 positions, and teams are expected to be deployed in the fall. The focus for the CERT teams is really on crime and social disorder in our public spaces, including transit. They are intelligence-led in their deployment, and they're tasked with ensuring that the community feels their concerns are heard, addressed, and that we provide feedback to the community on what was done to address those concerns. That feedback loop is, is absolutely key in our mind to helping us move the needle on public perception when it comes to safety in our city. We can do all the great work, but if we don't talk to our community and let them know, then they don't know. Within each team, we also have a high systems user coordinator, which works to identify people who, although may not necessarily have high levels of criminality, those, those individuals have behaviors that have high impact on the public sense of, of safety within our community. The HSU coordinator then take, then works with our partners, such as the Action Table Calgary, Crown, probation, to come up with wraparound solutions to address some of the issues that caused the behavior. In the first few months of the deployment, we've identified about 23 high systems users right now that we're working, working with. You'll learn more about CERTs and how we work together as systems with our HSUs next month when we come back to, with our city partners to talk about that. For now, I'll just leave you with a few stats, and then just a couple quick stories just to highlight some of the successes. Since their first deployment in the beginning of April, the teams have attended more than 1,600 calls for service. 68% of them are officer-generated. And so just to put that in perspective, that means that we're on the scene dealing with those issues prior to, hopefully, prior to the community calling or the community seeing that. And again, it's, you know, a lot of this is about perception of safety. The teams have charged 68 people with 194 charges, and they've executed about 1,200 arrest warrants thus far. Well, many of those warrants aren't necessarily serious offenses. We know that certainly in our public spaces, some of them are. So some of the outstanding warrants that we've been able to execute by the teams are for aggravated assault, sexual assault, forcible confinement, et cetera. So I'll just tell you a couple quick success stories. One is our District 4 Community Engagement Response Team received a wanted bulletin for a sex offender with a significant history of sexual offenses against children that had active warrants out. The information we had is that that individual was actively in our public spaces and, and trying to evade police. Within one hour, that team was able to locate that individual in an LRT station where they were trying to alter their appearance by, by shaving their head. And because of the work of those members, we were able to take that individual into custody. Similarly, when we had our District 5 Community Engagement Response Team out working proactively on hotspots from the community, one of our LRT stations, they located another individual. And in dealing with him, they realized that he had a very realistic-looking airsoft pistol on him. And, and again, we know that we've seen those types of incidents on especially on train stations, and that certainly causes, causes angst amongst our community, as it should. District 6, our District 6 team intended a call for service where a subject was actively bear-spraying people. They, the suspect was a parolee who had just reached his statutory release. And again, in dealing with that individual, they also found a realistic-looking airsoft gun and arrested him. They were able to, to do some extensive work with the Crown's office, as well as the National Weapon Enforcement Support Team, and able to ensure that that individual is held in custody where he currently remains. The, a couple, couple other stories, though, that's a little bit different than perhaps the enforcement or some different results. Our downtown CERT team is working with our DSET clinician, located male who had outstanding warrants. But as the members are dealing with that particular subject, they're also talking to the woman that he's with, which was his wife. His wife, in talking to the clinician, talked about how she wanted to get cleaned up. She was, was prepared at that point to look for a detox bed or go into a detox bed if there was one available. And the members were able to work together and, and find her bed at the drop-in center. They followed up a few days later, and she was still in there. She was still doing very well. And, and they were working on trying to get her a long-term, secure, a long-term bed. Just the last story, it'll end, I'll end, is that one of our high systems users was, was in custody, is still currently in custody, actually, but had been in custody for about three weeks. And our high system user coordinator for that particular district went to, to talk to, to this individual and started to understand a little bit about what was driving some of the behavior that that caused this individual to be identified as a high systems user. And they realized that, that this particular individual had a brother living in Brooks, Alberta, and they were able to connect this, this subject to, to his brother in Brooks. And, and the brother said, we, we want you back here. We, we want you to live here. We want you to come back. We'll take care of you. So because the individual, the subject is, is in custody and has been in custody for a bit, they were, they were cleaned up. They were sober. They were getting some, some help, and they agreed. And ultimately, agreement was, was, was worked out that when this individual gets released from custody, I think it's next week, we'll be going to, to live with family in Brooks. So the, as I said, there'll be some more, although it'll only be 10 minutes, but there'll be support next week. But I just wanted to, to let you know a little bit about the CERT teams. You're probably starting to hear some of them, and we are trying to, to push out some information on the great work those members are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Since our last update, we've had some incredible successes within the Bureau of Investigative Support. Chair, I've done my best at the table here to pare down my report. Most of the, any other details, please refer to the report that was submitted. It's important to note that this report highlights just some of the tremendous work being done every day. Before I get into the specifics, I want to thank each one of our members for their tenacity and efforts to lead our service with investigative excellence. May mark Sexual Violence Awareness Month in Alberta. To help spread awareness, reduce stigma, encourage reporting, we've been sharing information and supports for victims across our social media platforms. media platforms this month. We continue to work with our partners, who are dedicated to supporting victims of sexual violence. It is through these partnerships that we can work together to provide victims with the trauma-informed care and wraparound supports. Earlier this month, we also announced charges against a Calgary teacher, who is believed to have sexually assaulted a teenage student more than 20 years ago. This investigation underscores that no matter how much time has passed, our service will dedicate resources to seeking justice for the victims. So far this year, 29 shootings have been reported in Calgary, which is a 33% decrease from the same time last year. The majority of these shootings were targeted, and only a small number have a confirmed connection to organized crime at this time. As you know, as shooting investigations are complex, and those involved are often uncooperative, these percentages can increase as investigations progress to determine and confirm motivations and connections to organized crime. Our Firearms Investigative Unit also recently completed tracing analysis for all crime guns seized last year. And I think this group got to see that in action with our crime lab, or firearms lab. Of almost 2,000 firearms that were seized, recovered or turned into police in 2023, 428 met the definition of a crime gun. Of the crime gun seized last year, the origin of the firearm couldn't be determined in approximately 38% of the cases. We recognize that's high. This is often the results of firearms that were never given serial numbers, or businesses not retaining purchaser information in the case of non-restricted firearms. Also of note, 45% of the seized firearms had an altered barrel length, and 17% had prohibited items attached to them. Since our last update, we also made progress on several homicide investigations. So far this year, we've had seven. This time last year, we were at eight. We've had, we have charges laid on five of the seven. In April, our investigators were able to resolve four files, including a domestic homicide, a homicide that was the result of a landlord-tenant dispute, the death of a Calgary woman who went missing in February, and the tragic death of a toddler in 2022, Chair, that you referenced in your report. Each one of these files were complex, complex investigations that required the expertise of dozens of police officers, who are committed to seeking justice for the victims' families. The service also recently received the results of an independent review into homicide charges that were laid, and then subsequently stayed in November of 2023 after new evidence came to light. Following the staying of the charges, the service publicly apologized to the brothers charged. We continue to reiterate this apology and recognize the impact that this event had on those charged, their family, and the community. Our service takes our commitment to the community very seriously, including our commitments to accountability and transparency. For these reasons, we proactively arrange for an independent review, and are now publicly sharing an overview of those results. Most of the details, Chair, are contained within the letter from the Chair to you. This review, which was conducted by the RCMP K Division Office of Investigative Standards and Practices, considered whether the service's homicide investigation, from the time of the shooting to when the charges were stayed, was carried out in a manner consistent with best practice. The review also considered the communication between CPS members, whether there was any inappropriate bias, and whether crime-solving strategies were reasonable and appropriate. The review, the review found that our homicide investigation was legally compliant, reasonable, ethical, and carried out without influence or bias. As with any review, several recommendations were also noted, which our service has already begun to examine and address. As a service, we are committed to continual improvement and fostering cooperative relationships with the communities we serve. The results of this review reinforced our members' commitment to acting ethically, professionally, and to the best of their ability. I commend each one of our members for continuing to act with tenacity and professionalism. Our, our community should expect nothing less. I'd also like to acknowledge our partners with the Alberta Crown Prosecution Service for their participation in this review. Our service would also like to thank the RCMP OISP for their thoroughness and timeliness in conducting this independent review. This investigation into homicide remains ongoing, and we have dedicated resources to seeking answers for the victim's family. In the first third of the year, our domestic violence reports were slightly lower than the five-year average. Alternatively, our domestic conflict reports were approximately 12% higher than the five-year average. As I've stated before, we see this as a positive trend. This means that citizens are recognizing potentially dangerous situations and reporting domestic conflict prior to the situation escalating to violence. Chair in chief, that's my report.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Commissioners for questions. Commissioner Siddiqui?
Thank you for the report. And I'm not sure if the question is for Deputy Chief Cook or Director Michael Nunn, but the social media that you've been doing around sexual assaults and domestic violence and all that, are you translating those into other languages as well, and sharing it with diverse communities?
I believe so, but I'll have to just double-check that, and I'll get back to you. But I know a lot of our material these days does, we do translate it into different, different languages and use different platforms to deliver the messaging. But I will just double-check that.
Thanks. It's, it's so well done. Like, you've done a lot of changes over the last few years. That would be great to see some of these things translated and, and shown to other communities as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Nixon-Jordan?
Thanks. One of the stats that continues to concern me is the traffic fatalities. And they're increasing this year again. And we also are in this stalemate with the provincial government of the moratorium related to automated traffic supports. And also, I understand, and I can see from the stats, that we're actually increasing the number of tickets. But we don't have any visibility yet on why those tickets are not, what, what the outcome of those tickets are, because of the disconnect between two systems. Can you comment on whether that disconnect is going to be resolved, and we can find out whether or not the tickets are being thrown out for a particular reason, or being done, delivered in a different way in the courts? And also, can you comment on what can be done, from our perspective as a commission, to look at how we might influence the provincial government related to use of automated traffic camera use?
Thanks. I can talk to the first part. I would say that, no, there's still, there's still a gap there. There's also a delay. So what, one of the things that we're seeing is that, you know, even when we go back to talk to our officers, just, just to ask them about the summonses that we think that, that haven't been written, and they show us that they have. So even when we look at some of our systems, there is a delay in those, those summonses getting processed and making it onto our system, so we can give close-to-lifetime updates. So there's that problem. We still have, for sure, a gap with the province. I know our traffic unit is, is still talking to, to the province around how we could fix that, specific to, I think what I'll do, if that's okay, Chief, is specific to automated, automated enforcement, as I turn it over to Deputy Toffick.
Thanks very much. And just as a matter of update, recently, there's been some communication into the service, and I think we've shared it over to the commission very recently on an upcoming engagement session with the province on next steps for automated enforcement. So that will involve police agencies and other community partners. So we're looking forward to that. So there's probably an opportunity there for advocacy, both from us and the commission. That's on June 12th, I believe.
Thank you.
Can, can, sorry, sorry. But could, could we just, could you provide the answer in terms of when we can see the, the two systems, from the time the summons is provided, to what actually happens in court with those results? Because there was some information given that there was a disconnect between those systems.
I think there continues to be, Commissioner, a disconnect between the systems. The other issue with respect to summonses is after they're written, and when they go over to the court. If somebody pleads not guilty, oftentimes, there's a fairly considerable delay before it gets to the court. And then in other cases, people just don't do anything with the ticket. And as you know, what happens then is it actually goes to the registry. And if you go to get services, or whether it be to renew your registration or renew your license, then it gets dealt with, along with a surcharge at that time. So there's almost, like, if, in my mind, I'm envisioning a pie chart of the number of summonses that that people get. There's a good number that are, that are paid right away. Those will come, like, that revenue would flow back between the province and the city quite quickly. Then there's a portion that goes to court, that would be delayed. And then there's a proportion that gets left until people get caught, or have to renew their services. And that gets even delayed, sometimes further. So there can be a real delay, I guess, is, even if the systems are cooperating, it's still very tough to model it out. And I know that because we've tried.
Thanks.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks very much. Vibrant Communities Calgary have released their report, No Place to Go. And I know that they did a number of interviews with Calgary Police Service, and yeah, complimented the officers that participated in that report. The report itself is to examine the barriers and facilitators to safety and transit spaces in Calgary. Acting Deputy Chief O'Brien, it looks like you're super familiar with it. So I'm hoping that you could just speak to some of the recommendations, and the contributions that CPS made to that report, and any of the takeaways that you're actively working to implement now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. We have been talking to our transit partners around that report. I would say that, that, the, the research that was done is not, it was at a time when we were definitely struggling. And so I would argue that it's quite a bit different now than it was when they were doing that particular research. That being said, I think there were, there's things in there that are, are very important, and we are talking to our city partners about. So are there places to bring people that want some type of shelter, outside of shelter? So we obviously have a drop-in center in Elphouse and other places to go. Some individuals don't want to go there for various reasons. And so are there some other facilities and places to bring them? When we take a look at some of the complex needs of our unhoused, our homeless people, it's, it's not simple. I, I take some, I would point out that I think the vast majority of our community, when they see a uniformed officer, whether it be a police officer or a transit peace officer, I think they do feel a sense of, of safety, at least at that moment, in that time, in that place. And I think one of the things you'll hear about next month is, is really how transit and, and the police are working together to make sure that we're de-conflicting, that we're in the right places at the right time, and trying to help with the people that need that help.
Thanks very much. It's, in reading the report, I'm going to say, not, I'm not going to say reading, I'm going to say skimming, because you know that I read in detail, so I'm going to say skimming. The, it seemed like it was a call for reach-up. And I'm just going to put that out there, and put that bug in Deputy Chief McClellan's ear. This is still a, this is still a clear program that Calgarians need. Calgarians will benefit from, and we won't, we won't let it fail. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Tenge?
Just quickly, thank you for your report. In March and April, over 10,000 traffic stops each month. I am curious, A, if we, if that data, if all of those 10,000 are the number of stops, it may have included warnings or education provided to the driver. And second part of the question is, how many of those traffic stops led to more serious interventions, rather than just a simple traffic ticket?
Yeah, thank you. So, yes, that 10,000 would be really any reason. So it may be traffic infraction. It may very well be, those would be specific to typically, I mean, it may be a suspicious vehicle that, that left, that somebody's doing, an officer's doing a, a stop on. I don't have the data. We'd have to compare how many summonses were issued to that traffic stop, or to the data on the traffic stops. I don't have that. The vast majority of traffic stops, I would say, probably do warrant some type of warning. They're not necessarily summonses. Again, our officers have that discretion. And if talking to somebody and giving them a warning is sufficient, they believe, to correct the behavior, that is what happens at times. And sorry, what was your second question?
I, I guess just how many of them ended up being a warning or a summons versus a more serious intervention?
Yeah, I don't, thanks. I don't have stats on how many would, would be something more serious, but I can tell you that on an awful lot of our traffic stops, or stolen vehicles, probably several times a day, we're covering handguns in those vehicles. So we would have to dig into the data specifically, but I can tell you that that's a fairly frequent occurrence in the city these days.
Thank you. And just, just to be clear, we do have that data. So we would know the number of traffic stops, how much of them lead to more serious criminal charges versus a summons, traffic ticket versus a warning?
Yes. Yeah, we could, we would have to dig into that, but for sure, we have that information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you. That ends the reports that we were expecting and have been through today. So appreciate all of the, both the reporting, the work that it takes to put all those together, and the very comprehensive discussion. And I know the protest took a long time, but it's a significant event in the city, and we needed to, to work through that. So appreciate that from both the service and the commission members. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Hold on a second. Sorry, just aside, was there anything else you wanted to speak to the RCMP letter? Or it was covered fairly well, I thought. Is there anything else?
No, nothing further unless there are questions, Chair.
No, I think it was covered fairly well. So unless there's specific questions on that from Commission? No, don't see any. No, okay. Thank you. So we will move on to representative updates. So these are reports from Commissioners who represent our commission on various associations and committees. They are provided as written reports, and I will just open to Commissioners if you have questions for any of the representatives. Once, twice, seeing none. They're fairly straightforward. So we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the Public Participation Agenda, item number seven. So we'll now invite public guests who've registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who register to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by Commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the commission or the CPS having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about a specific employee or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer or another employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section, so it can be properly addressed. I would also like to thank everyone who took time to send us written submissions prior to this meeting. They have been provided to everyone on the commission as part of the meeting materials, and we appreciate you taking the time to write and share your thoughts. There were quite a number of this month, and they've all been read. I can guarantee that. And finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first, and then we'll hold immediate availability for you following that. So if I can ask Director Odlan to put through the first speaker?
Thank you, Chair. Just to, we have two speakers registered for today, and both of them will be asked via their computers to become panelists. And once they do, we can have them speak. The first speaker is Ms. Angela Whitney, and she has a question regarding injunctions. The first speaker is Ms. Angela Whitney, and she has a question regarding injunctions. I don't see her yet. Hold on one second, sorry. There we go. Are you there, Angela? Okay. Angela, we see you on the call, we just can't hear you quite yet. There she is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, may I proceed?
Yes, you may.
Good afternoon, Calgary Police Commission. My name is Angela Whitney, and I'm the former Director of Human Resources at the Calgary Police Service. On March 18th, 2024, I was served with an ex-party injunction, meaning an injunction in the interest of one party only, the CPS, and done without notice to my lawyers. The injunction prohibited me, and still prohibits me, from making any complaints to the Calgary Police Commission, making any complaints to the City of Calgary, the Province of Alberta, the Honourable Minister of Justice, or any governing bodies whatsoever. Importantly, the injunction prohibited me from making public statement or otherwise disclosing or revealing to anyone other than my lawyers that there was an injunction in place. Effective May the 24th, 2024, the presiding justice removed the portion of the injunction that disallowed me from disclosing or revealing the injunction. Effective still today, until the justice renders a decision, I am not permitted to make any complaints to or about the Calgary Police or the Police Commission. On March the 27th, 2024, during the last Commission meeting, it was communicated to the media that I am not submitting complaints to the Commission despite the ability to do so. The justice was clear on May the 24th that if I make complaints of any kind to a governing body, I could be in contempt of court and end up in jail as a result. Yes, jail could be a reality for attempting to blow the whistle and report inappropriate and unlawful police behavior. This injunction that Mr. Newfeld sought was clear and well-known on March the 27th. The injunction terms were crystal clear when the statement was made by both Mr. Newfeld and Chair Cornet that I am not submitting complaints to the Commission. This is not an accurate reflection of what has occurred and continues today. As a result, I am in attendance to ask a question, which comes in the form of a request for the Chair and Mr. Newfeld. I respectfully request that you correct your statements of March the 27th with the media this evening regarding my ability to blow the whistle and submit complaints to the Police Commission or the government, and acknowledge that it has been ensured that I am not able to do so, given the injunction that has been put in place by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Appreciate your question and your request. I will start by saying that the Commission is not a party to the injunction, and we don't have any details on the injunction. I would also suggest that if you wish to pursue this further, you can contact Executive Director Spicer or the Complaints Director at the Commission and talk about what options there might be. But we don't have any details on the injunction ourselves.
Okay, Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Caitlin Anderson, and she has some questions related to the protest response.
Hi, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, thanks.
So good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Caitlin Anderson, and I'm a PhD student at the University of Calgary. And I'm here today in my capacity as a protester, a role that many historians, researchers, and citizens value as one that is engaged with understanding the systems that we live in and asking them to be better. I'm also struggling with the impacts of the concussion sustained on the evening of May 9th, when I was struck by an officer during the Calgary Police Services efforts to keep our campus safe. As Chief Constable Newfeld has noted, thank you, there's a problem inherent with reporting injuries sustained by police to police. Personally, I'm still processing how to trust the people who I had believed were there to protect me. And I know that others, including one student and one treasured member of our community, a group that the university so often claims to serve, left campus May 9th in ambulances. Today, I'm hoping for answers to two questions. First, I would like further clarification on the difference in urgency and force using the freedom protests and the campus protests. Chief Newfeld, I hear you say that 2022 is a world away, but by then we had already seen a number of large protests, including the outpouring of support for Black Lives Matter. The timeline gap that is more surprising to me is not the two years between 2022 and 2024, but the months of the so-called freedom protests were allowed to disrupt businesses and residents in the Beltline versus the near hours of grace that students were given. Can you speak to the perception of uneven or unfair policing of protest groups, especially around the perception that the that the willingness to enforce laws shifts in relation to the color of people's skin or their perceived political or religious alliances? And second, I'm taken aback by the position of the 11 Commissioners that this was not a major policing event, and as such, that the cost of the unprecedented intervention does not merit an accounting to Calgarians and to Albertans. Instead, I am in agreement with Chairwoman Sean Cornet that the events around the protest were a significant event. The use of force has been called excessive by many, including the faculties of law at both the University of Calgary and the University of Alberta. Chief Newfeld, what then would constitute a major policing event? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll turn over the chief first, and then I'll have a comment afterwards. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Caitlin, thanks for attending the meeting today and asking your questions. So just on the first one, that was a bit of a long question, so I might have to get you to just reiterate some of it. But I think you're talking about the perceptions that different protests at different times have been handled differently by the police. Is that, in essence, about right?
That's right. Yeah, you said like 2022 to 24. Like, I don't understand, this seems like a small period, but if we talk about time periods, like freedom protests were allowed downtown for months versus, you know, I was on campus for, I think it was 12 hours, 14 hours. So, you know, I think that it's clear that there were different groups of people that were involved in both. So is there, do you, there's a perception that it is, that one group is very white and the other are people of color and people of different political and religious affiliations? So what does the Calgary Police do about that perception and how we handle that going forward?
Yeah, thank you.
Does that clear it up?
It is. Thanks for the clarification. So I think part of what I talked about in relation to having ongoing communications and dialogue with protest groups actually helps to demystify some of those things. Because I think when we're clear with protest groups about, you know, sort of where the where the boundaries are or where the concerns are in relation to some of the protests and events, I think that helps to the extent that the groups are, you know, open to the information and the level to which they want to cooperate. I think those were different, like they were different times, but I, but I don't think that completely helps. But this is not about skin color, this is not about, you know, ideologies or political beliefs or whatever. There's lots of polarization, as I said, in the community around these events. But at the end of the day, there is a right to protest. It's our job to support those rights and to help facilitate that right for sure. There is differences depending on where it is and the context and what kind of impact those protests and the activities are happening. I did mention too, that at times you can get individuals involved in an otherwise lawful protest that engage in behaviors that become problematic, and they, those behaviors can become illegal. So I think it just underscores the the difficulty and the complexity in the environment and why we have tried as a police service to put out a lot of information on our social media channels and through all other mediums that we can about about protest-related law, about people's rights and responsibilities, and then having what we call PLTs, protest liaison officers and diversity advisory officers that are connected to community. Some of those have trusting relationships already to again have conversations between Monday and Friday about what's going to happen, for instance, on a protest Saturday. And the goal is to make sure that the protest can happen and people can say their piece but not get into trouble or not negatively impact other members of the community. Your second question there about the major policing event, I think this is a little bit semantics around the Commission's policy, because I think what you're saying is true. I think for those involved, it was a very impactful policing event, but a major policing event is defined under Commission policy. And so I can declare, and usually it's it's myself that declares a major policing event. And in the past, those have been events that we planned for over some period of time. I think the Chair referred to the World Petroleum Congress and other major planning events that go in, we declare those major policing events. We have not done that with protests in the past, although the point about, you know, collecting protest-related, excuse me, costs and this type of thing is is an important point as well. But I guess what I don't want to do is be saying that that wasn't an impactful event on you or others. I understand that it was for sure.
Thank you. And if I can just add, Ms. Anderson, two points or comments for you to think about. One is, it is still a serious event, and it's currently been investigated and looked into by ACERT or the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team. So that's one avenue that's being pursued at this point. The other thing that I would suggest, if you wish, is that you can talk to the Public Complaints Director at the Commission if you have concerns about the police and how things have been handled. So that's another avenue that you have to pursue if you would like. But thank you very much for bringing that that question and your your comments forward.
Okay, thank you, Chair. That concludes our public speakers for tonight.
Thank you. So thank you for everyone who brought Commission comments, reports, and also for the written comments, the written statements that are in our materials. The public participation session brings us to the end of our agenda. So we'll now, during the public portion of this month's Commission meeting, Chief Newfeld and I will move to the podium in just a moment, where we'll be available to answer questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. Commissioners and members of the Service participating in the in-camera portion of our meeting, we will take a break after the media session before we continue the in-camera section. So while we move and do the media conversation, if you can keep the room as quiet as you can, we can get working on that right away. So thank you very much.
For those members of the media, we're just shuffling the room and getting, getting a drink before we step up to the podium, give us one moment. Okay, we will start with Tiffany Goodwin from, sorry, from City News. Tiffany, you should be able to speak now.
Hi there. My question is for Chief Newfeld. So during your PSS report, it was noted that a member liaison position was created to support officers and their supervisor throughout the process. Now, while that might be great, arguably, I would suggest that the PSS process can make complainants absolutely crazy and lose their minds, and it can have a significant impact on them mentally and financially. So, and you know, it's not a walk in the park for people. So my question is, is that what work is CPS doing to ensure there is enough support for complainants who are going through this very process?
Yeah, thanks, Tiffany. I think it's a good question. And I think during Executive Director Murphy's report, she talked about some of the work that's being done in relation to making it easier and more accessible to make complaints in a timely manner, in relation to translating some of those things, the work ongoing now into multiple different languages to make it more accessible to folks. Yeah, I think there is opportunities there. If somebody is having a difficult time navigating the process, there's even opportunities to be able to plug in to the Police Commission here through the Public Complaint Director as well, if there's concerns about going directly to the Police Service themselves. So I think those things are in place. The surveying we did recently as well also helped identify some concerns. And so if you have information about concerns, Tiffany, that you're referencing here, certainly we're happy to hear about where some of those pinch points might be. But but I think, you know, there is every every effort being made to make the process something that doesn't drive folks toward difficulty.
Yeah, my next question is, of the 70% of complaints closed under a year, what because the officer decided to go through a loophole and retire or resign? Hello?
Sorry, Tiffany, they're just getting some documentation to try to find the answer.
Hi, Tiffany, it's Catherine Murphy here. The percentage is actually very low, making up that 70%. So you can find in the annual report the percentage of complaints that fall in the dismissed category, and that's for a number of reasons, one of which could include a resignation. But I wouldn't say that it has a material impact on the 70% closure rate as well. Those are files that are formally investigated, right? So within the 70%, that does include files that go to ACERT or to the Crown for an opinion, which, as we know, can take some time.
Right. So I, another question is, is there's been some criticism over the handling of certain files, mainly that criticism is coming from, you know, Tom Engel, who says that, you know, like CPS is like disposing things. And so it says 46.1 files are down 22% over the five-year average. How much of that is because matters are disposed of as non-serious under the Act?
Yeah, when it comes to the 46.1 files, Tiffany, none of those are are disposed down the line in the way that you're suggesting. The numbers are counted by the number of 46.1 notifications that the service makes to the province, and that's, that's a statutory responsibility for us in the Police Act. So if those numbers are down, it's just because less of the incidents have occurred that year. We continue to report those incidents that are required to be reported each time that they occur.
And just in regards to the end.
Tiffany, just to interject, sorry, we do have a line, so we're going to go to someone else, and then we can come back for another question, if that's okay. Okay, so we will go, we'll go now to Paula Tran at Global Calgary. Paula, you should be able to answer your question or ask your question.
This is a question for Chief Newfeld. In your report about what happened at the University of Calgary on May 9th, it was stated repeatedly that there were some protesters who weren't students or who were based in the US. I was wondering what information did the police have that led to this conclusion?
Sorry, just to be clear, I didn't say that there was protesters from the US. I was talking about the subsequent protest, I think several days later, where there was an individual who came to speak who was from the US. So it wasn't that there was protesters from the US in the encampment. In terms of your second part of your question about what information did police have, we saw them there.
Sorry, my, my second question is also for Chief Newfeld. Could you provide more information about why a call was made for police to come to campus?
Well, I mean, I can give you my understanding of it, but the people that called would have a better sense of the reason they called. But the call was entered at 6:37, as I had mentioned, from campus security. They were based on, you know, what they were experiencing there in terms of people showing up and beginning to build encampments. I mentioned that they started by engaging the individuals there, letting them know that they weren't able to do that, letting them know that the university considered that to be trespassing. And I think, you know, very, very, very soon, they were observing that there was little likelihood that they were going to get cooperation, and therefore they notified police.
Okay, we'll now move on to Okay, we will now move on to Matt from Post Media. Matt, you should be able to ask your question.
Hi, thanks for taking my question as your Chief Newfeld. I know you touched on this briefly earlier. I'm just wondering if you could give us a bit more on your thoughts on other police forces' response to the encampments and why CPS took the action it took. And I'm curious in terms of Montreal specifically. As far as I understand, I think the police have not granted the university's requests to move on the encampments. I'm wondering what the thinking was and whether they took, perhaps took that option into account.
Yeah, we did for sure. We were well aware of what was happening across the country. And I think the driving factors here, though, are really the context at the post-secondary institution and what they're thinking about what's happening and their situational factors about where encampments are and who they believe to be involved and what approach they want to take to it. It's really the post-secondary institutions that decide what the response is going to be. I think what we've seen, though, I mentioned that other post-secondary institutions, including McGill, as you've referenced, did have encampments first. And so again, universities were talking about, you know, what their experience was. I think maybe people thought that it might be okay in some cases, but you noticed after that issues arose, similar to the one that I referred to today at the UBC, that later required post-secondary institutions to go to the courts to seek injunctions. In this case, the University of Calgary was very clear that they encouraged protests, which everybody gets. However, they were not going to allow encampments on their property. And so, like I say, very clear in their position on it, clearly communicated. And when they didn't get cooperation, they sought assistance of the police.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that, I'm curious why it's relevant that there were folks who are not students at these protests?
I think it's relevant to the tone and tenor of the protests themselves. I think there are, you know, protests, including some encampments around the country, where university executive feels that the majority of what's going on involves, I think, the student community or the university community. And the tone and tenor is such that these are sort of what I would call more regular protests that occur, have occurred, you know, historically at the university. There are, you know, different situations where you have outside influences or yeah, I would just say outside influences that maybe are not connected to the university community, and maybe they're not invested in the same way. And if I was at the university, that would create me far more concerns than it would if I was satisfied that we were just dealing with our students. So, you know, I'm not surprised that there's people at the protests that are not from the university, of course. But at the end of the day, if the people that are ultimately having the strongest influence are not students, it makes for a very, very different type of protest, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to Taylor from CBC. Taylor, you should be able to speak.
Yeah, hi, thanks for taking my question. This is for Mark Newfeld as well. The initial police reports said that there were five people arrested, and now there is today, it said only there was four arrests. Just wondering what happened with that?
Thanks, Taylor. Just speaking to quickly with the Communications Director, I think the early information that we had after the event was that there was five. And once we were able to sort of take stock, I think the answer was four, so miscommunication early on.
And then I just had one more question, and that was just, when was the last time that CPS did use like things like pepper balls and OC grenades to disperse a crowd? And what was the criteria for that?
That would have been in October of 2023, and that would have been in response to the, or is it September of 2023? It would have been in response to the Falcon Ridge incident there with the violence among the Eritrean community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we are running a bit behind schedule, so we'll go back to you, Tiffany, for one more question. And if anyone else on the line has one final question they want to ask, please raise your hand.
Yeah, just in regards to the Angela Whitney matter, is CPS looking to change the injunction to allow her to formally make a complaint? And I'm just curious as to why CPS doesn't know about the conditions of the injunction?
Hi, Tiffany, we do know, I believe it's on the record very clearly that Ms. Whitney can report to the Calgary Police Commission, and I believe she knows that too. So that's, I'll leave that there.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up, so we will end it there. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.